Stand. Jean on the other side of the screen is going to give us the moment of silence and the pledge.
I would like to reflect for this moment of silence on the devastation that has happened in California and the losses that have been endured by the fires. And now for the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so fire evacuation announcement. In the unlikely event of a fire, we can go out the back doors of the chambers and out to the parking lot, or you can go out the side doors here, your first set of doors to the left, down the stairs to the basement level and out into the parking lot. Kathy, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Here.
Mr. Kovar?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
All right. Board guests. Mr. Macio, item A.
Thank you very much. We have two board guests this evening. The first one we are going to bring up, we have the Ellington High School Community Action Project. So we're very happy to have teacher Anthony Allegro here with some of his high school students who are participating in social studies elective course. So he's going to take you through that project.
Awesome.
Yep. I stopped reading purposefully because I did not want to steal any of your thunder.
Hi, I'm Tony Allegro, teacher, social studies teacher at Enfield High School. I have the pleasure of teaching the course Community Action Learning, which is an elective social studies course that we offer every semester. It's open to freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors at Enfield High. It's a very unique course where it's a project-based course. It's very student-centered. My role actually is very different in that class, where I pretty much take a step back. I just give the students organizational strategies and skills and help them develop leadership skills along the way as they design and implement a real community project. So to the right of me are Alicia and Sam. They are currently working on their community project, and they're going to talk about all they have accomplished so far this semester.
Good evening, fellow board members, and thank you for allowing us the time tonight to share our project with you. Enfield High School offers a course to students called Community Action Learning. This class allows students to work with fellow classmates to create a real community nonprofit project and gain unique service learning experience. For the first quarter of the class, students are put into small groups where they will create a community project for a cause of their choice and create a presentation outlining what it is and how they will achieve their project goals. These presentations are presented at the end of quarter one to a board of judges. This year, it consisted of Mr. Allegro, Humanities Director Mr. Sine, and Deputy Superintendent Mr. Longi. Together, the judges chose one group that they feel would be most successful as the Community Action Learning Semester One Class Project. Once selected, the class collectively takes on this project and assigns classmates to committees such as communications, logistics, social media, and fundraising, as well as elect a president, vice president, and secretary in order to keep the project organized and ensure roles are completed equally by the entire class. To ensure the class runs efficiently, we learned in the beginning of the year how to run a meeting using Robert's Rules of Order, similar to how the Board of Education runs. This class is especially unique because it is mostly student-run, and students are encouraged to take full ownership of their community project. From this, we learn important communication strategies and leadership skills such as public speaking and email etiquette. This year, the judges chose Funding Our Future as the community project for semester one. Funding Our Future is a community nonprofit project that strives to provide funds for Enfield Public Schools in light of recent budgetary issues and raise awareness for the necessities of funding public schools in order for them to thrive and to give all Enfield Public Schools students a memorable school experience. This project was created after students in the class noticed many of our favorite programs and events at the high school were no longer offered and had come to realize this was a district-wide occurrence. We looked back and remembered the fond memories we have had in Enfield Public Schools throughout our childhood. Events like guest authors, field trips, and school-wide spirit events were the highlights of our educational experience. The Enfield School District has constantly worked hard to provide an exceptional education and experience for each and every child, and we wanted to ensure that current and future generations were able to have the same amazing experience as we did, no matter the budgetary and financial concerns occurring in our town. We knew that what we were doing would not make a huge change, but it would be a step in the right direction. Even slight changes can make a significant impact, and that was what the overall goal of Funding Our Future was.
As an organization, we planned four different fundraisers throughout the semester with the help of all of our committees. These fundraisers include candy cane grams that we sold to staff and students during the holiday season, a can and bottle drive, a Red Robin Restaurant fundraising night, and an EHS after-school nitro ball tournament. Each committee played an influential role in each fundraiser. For example, the Communications Committee emailed, called, or talked in person with the people needed to coordinate the event. The fundraising committee submitted detailed outlines for each fundraiser to get them approved by the school and the Logistics Committee planned out all the fine details of the event and ensured it had a realistic goal. And lastly, social media worked to promote and advertise each event to get the best turnout. And we also acquired five sponsorships with great help from the Communications Committee, emailing local businesses and fellow group members, going to local stores and asking in-person to help our cause. We received sponsorships from Advanced Electric Contractors, Kelly Construction Services, Smoothville Groundings, and Riley School of Dance. Through this process, we have had to manage our budget and finances, produce marketing strategies using social media accounts to draw in a crowd and to draw attention to our project, and create community partnerships, as well as learning how to unite and educate the public on a community issue. Managing our budget and finances was not easy. We had to learn how to properly count and record our cash and log our sponsorship checks, as well as reimbursing people if needed. We learned and used the best practices on how to record our finances to prepare for audits and transparency. Managing our social media also came with big lessons. For example, making posts that will draw viewers' attention and be relatable to all age groups. In all, this class not only supported a great cause but taught us meaningful life lessons that will prepare us for our lives after high school. In a situation where we could have just sat back and complained, we decided to roll up our sleeves and help a situation that was important to us. And that is what this project was really all about.
So I just want to commend these two students next to me and our class. They, through the course of only about a month and a half, when we actually started implementing the project, they raised $2,000 that they will give back to Enfield Public Schools. So kudos to them. Great job.
That's awesome.
And that is all from us.
That's all. Okay. So does anybody have questions, comments? Mrs. Pickett?
Of course I do. First, I just want to let Jean know that her mic is on, just so she's aware. First, I want to thank you, Tony, Alicia, and Sam, for being here. It's not like a convenient or awesome time to come, but it is obvious that the course and other learnings that you've had at Enfield have prepared you for tonight because you're amazing. I just want to say, I know we've heard about this course and Curriculum Committee, so understanding how necessary this course is, I'm glad that it's still part of our schedule. I'm glad that we're still invested in this course. I think allowing for community building across grades, hearing that this is freshman and upperclassmen together, that it's student-centered. And I also just want to remind you, Tony, that your facilitation as an educator does matter, so don't undersell yourself. I love your title for your project, Funding Our Future. I hope that you all had access to our last Board of Ed presentation where we had the school finance project present about school funding and things like that. I'm seeing Mr. Allegro, not his head. If not, I'm sure we will all share that. I also just want to reinforce a couple of things that you said. First, you are part of a huge change. This is huge. Everyday actions actually matter more than like big, huge, sweeping statements or things that are said. You inspire hope, and you're requiring us to understand the importance of the investment of our youth and in public education. You are role models for action. So thank you. I also want to thank our local business partners. I know you named some specifically. Thank you to the partners and those who volunteer and give. That's really important. And I hope to see you all coming up for local positions soon in office. So understanding Robert's Rules, understanding everything that you've just learned, you need to do this. So I hope to see you all someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickett. Anybody else? Dr. Kalman?
This is very inspiring. I think this is something that the high school really could benefit from, but I also think it benefits the community immensely. You're learning right now the importance of interacting with the community, community resources, and that's so important. A lot of projects and initiatives have just founded on a lack of the ability to go out to the community and sell themselves. And really, this is largely what this is all about. And apropos of that, I guess that one of the questions that I did have was, how did you approach the various businesses? And did you have some way of preparing for that door knocking?
So some of our sponsorships came from emails. So we carefully planned out a script altogether of what we would be sending, something that outlines the background of our project, what we're trying to do and our goals, and then asking for their support and our cause. And then we made a packet as well for when we were going in-person. And this packet, again, outlined our background and our goals. And then we put on there, like, type the amount like a sponsorship donation could be and where to send it. And we carried around these packets with us and approached our local businesses, explained what we were doing, gave them a packet to learn more about it, and they could mail in a donation if they wanted to, but they weren't obligated to.
Okay, great. The other thing I just wanted to comment on was, this is a really, really good example of resilience. These are really, really tough times. All the schools have been suffering badly over these last couple of years, and yet your group has demonstrated that we can bounce back from this. And maybe we should start looking first and foremost about the way the students are handling this challenge, because we can learn a lot from you folks. And then lastly, I'm really glad that you're using Robert's Rules of Order. It's an approach to meetings that I think is being more and more neglected, and I think that's a shame. People make it a lot more difficult than it really is. If you just learn the basics, and if you have a specific question, as long as you have the book nearby, you can, basically, it's a reference. And it helps to avoid a lot of acrimony and a lot of misunderstandings. So congratulations for emphasizing Robert's Rules of Order. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
Just a quick question. What is the next fundraiser on your schedule? And how can we help you promote it?
So our class ends, and I believe we have about three more class periods. So unfortunately, we do not have any more fundraisers planned.
So this was just a one semester course. Is there a second class in the second semester the same year?
Yep.
So I would just ask your advisor to let us know as these events are coming up, because we could help promote them too through the different social media channels that we have as well.
That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah, every semester is a new project, so when we start a new project, we'll let you guys know for sure.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Blake?
Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts on this project. We have heard from both Izzy and Olivia how much the budget cuts have affected the high school and how much the students have voiced their concern about it. I think it's important to always listen to student voice. I know in the past, there have been people that have said that, you know, perhaps that it wasn't your true voice, but they don't give our Enfield Public Schools students enough credit to know that you are smart and intelligent and well-spoken, and you're also really wanting to give back to the community. It makes me sad that you have to raise money for your schools, that we should be providing an education for you from this town, for all of our families in town. But I appreciate this. I love hearing from the Community Action Group every year. I'm glad that you're able to take that opportunity. So I appreciate your hard work. I think about all the stuff you do, and I'm like, oh, we did that for Safe Grad. We have to do this. But whatever you're going to do after high school, whether you go out into the working world, or going to college, or go into a trade, or any type of profession, this class has well-prepared you for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Kuschman?
Thank you for being here. I just was curious. It must have been a really tough job to choose, you know, one project out of everything suggested. But I was curious if you've ever found that there's a group that takes an idea that wasn't chosen for a semester and just runs with it on their own. Has that ever happened before?
Yeah, that's a great question. Sometimes that happens where sometimes we pick projects that are really detailed, and they take a lot of our time. And some semesters, we have projects that don't require that much time. So sometimes we try to do some extra things or incorporate some of the projects that didn't get picked in some fashion, whether it's just doing a separate fundraiser to raise money and to donate to that cause. But yeah, we try to do more than just this one project. In the past, this class has been great in supporting our Kid Mayor program. They've been mentors to the elementary school students to help them with their Kid Mayor projects and build a sense of community there through mentorship that we have done in the past. Unfortunately, this year, we didn't have the ability to do that. But yeah, we try to fit in as many side projects as we can to make the biggest impact.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Anybody else? Okay.
Well, you guys, amazing job. I'm sorry that your fundraiser had to be to raise money for field trips and stuff like that and guest authors. But I thought that it was super important, because I had brought it up before about getting lessons in email etiquette, because that's going to be a key thing when you go into the real working world. And if you have that under your belt already, you're already ahead of the rest of your peers. So that's an important thing. I like that you said that slight changes make a significant impact, because they do. So even if you think it's small, the ripples go forever. The only other question that I had about the class was, so now that you've done the fundraisers, how does the class wrap up? Do they have to, like, write a paper on their experience? Or how does that work?
So for the end of their course, before the quarter two ends, they have to put together a portfolio, each student, and it talks about their experience. But it's mostly a reflection of their experience and what they've learned. If they were to go back and do this project again, what things would they avoid in the future, what changes they would make, and how they took their experiences from quarter one, which is kind of just learning about the process of organizing and how to be an active community member, how they put together all those pieces. So it's more of a reflection piece. And then their final exam, they use that portfolio to write a nice, long response. They don't like that part. But a nice, long response on how this, not only this experience was valuable to them, but how they could use it in the future in their own lives going forward.
Awesome. Very, very awesome. Well, I look forward to hearing about more projects in the future. And like Scott said, if you guys can bring them here or to the student reps, so we can help advertise for you. You got free advertising up here from us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Macio, guest B, please.
Guest B, we are going to welcome to the presentation table Special Education Director Julie Carroll, and a number of other folks have come to assist her. She's going to take us and provide an overview related to the special education program, as well as the number of specialized programs that we maintain within the district. And I believe she's going to give us the overview. And then obviously, there is a portion of this where you're going to start to hear some of the flavorings of budget information that will be coming up. So you're going to see, over the course of the next few board meetings, you're going to have some more of these presentations. But we're going to start with Julie.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I am going to be providing you with an overview of special education and specialized programs within the Enfield Public Schools. I've invited to join me tonight Lauren Andrews, who is our district's Special Education Coordinator for Grades Three through Five and Coordinator of Eagle Academy, and also Brian Olson, who is Coordinator of Eagle Academy. So I want to thank those two for joining me tonight. Before we get started, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank our special education coordinators who have contributed to tonight's presentation: Bridget Burchell, Allison Law, Amy Dennis, Lauren Andrews, and Brian Olson. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank our special education and general education teachers and related service and support staff for the tremendous work they do every day on behalf of our students. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge and thank our families for their continued support and partnership. So now, let's get started with our presentation. So what is special education? Special education is specially-designed instruction to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. Students who receive specialized instruction may also receive related services. Related services may include speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and counseling, for example. All of these services are provided in the least restrictive environment, also known as the LRE. And it's important to note that all identification, programming, and placement decisions are made by each student's planning and placement team and documented within each student's individualized education program, also known as the IEP. There are 15 primary disability classifications for special education, and they are listed for you on the slide. They range from specific learning disability to speech and language impairment, to developmental delay, to multiple disabilities, and more. So there are 15 altogether. And again, it's important to remember that eligibility decisions are made by each student's planning and placement team in accordance with state guidelines. Each student's planning and placement team also determines where the student services will occur. This diagram, the continuum of placements, shows placements from least restrictive to most restrictive. And as you can see, specialized instruction can occur in a variety of settings. Specialized instruction can take place in the general education classroom, or in a resource room, which is a small group setting. It can also take place in specialized classes where students have access to the general education classroom. And I'm going to be speaking more tonight about our specialized classes and programs in district. Specialized instruction can also take place in a separate, special program within the district. And for us, that would be our Eagle Academy. And Lauren Andrews and Brian Olson will be providing you with an update on our Eagle Academy shortly. And specialized instruction can also occur in a separate school outside of the district. We would refer to this as an outplacement. An outplacement is an out-of-district facility that is designed to serve students with more intensive needs. Some outplacements may also have a clinical component. Most of our students in Enfield with IEPs can be served in classes and programs in district, but there will always be a small number of students who may require an outplacement. And again, placement decisions are made by each student's planning and placement team. So next, on this slide, we'd like to talk to you a little bit about the outplacements in our district. First of all, it's important to note that our total Enfield Public Schools enrollment is approximately, last time I checked, 4,806 students. Of those, 1,027 students qualify for and receive special education services. We have 26 students who are placed in programs outside of the district. Those are our outplacements. So if we look at the numbers, our Enfield Public Schools' outplacement rate at this moment in time is 2.5%. Now, it's interesting to note, we did a little research. We went on the state website, ed site. Some of you may be familiar with it. On the state website, ed site, there are reports that the public can access, has a lot of information about different districts and the state. On ed site, the most recent data available to us is from the 2022-23 school year. So those were the reports that we were referencing for our presentation tonight. So the state outplacement rate on the 22-23 report is 4.7%. As we were looking at this information on ed site, we were curious about how we compare to other districts. So if you look at the bar graph to the right, outplacement percentages, we'll take a look at that. In green, you'll know our current outplacement rate is 2.5%. On the ed site 22-23 report that we accessed, East Windsor's outplacement rate was 4.2%, Windsor Locks was 4.4%, Connecticut's was 4.7%, Manchester's 6.5%. On the 22-23 report, Enfield was at 2.7%. So since that point in time, we've come down a little, and now our rate is 2.5%. So as you can see, our outplacement rate is well below our nearby districts and the state rate. Within our continuum of placements, which is that diagram we showed you on the previous slide, most of our students can learn and thrive in our Enfield Schools. We are able to serve most of our students with special needs in district because we have a rich variety of specialized programs in district, and we have our Eagle Academy, which we opened at the beginning of the 2019-20 school year. So next, we'd like to share with you some highlights of these programs. For our youngest students, our preschoolers, we have our Integrated Preschool Program. Our Integrated Preschool Program offers specialized preschool classes for children with disabilities and peer partners. The program maintains a focus on each student's IEP goals and objectives, which are aligned to the Connecticut Early Learning and Development Standards. We currently have 5.5 special education teachers and a variety of related service and support staff, which includes our wonderful speech and language pathologists, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, our school psychologists, our BCBA, our paraprofessionals, and behavior technicians, as required by students' IEPs. As of October 1st, 2024, our enrollment in the integrated program was 93 students and 11 half-day sessions. in the integrated program was 93 students and 11 half-day sessions. Our current enrollment is 108 students and our 11 half-day sessions. It's important for us to note that our enrollment in the Integrated Preschool Program increases throughout the school year as students are identified for special education through birth-to-three and child find and as peer partners are added to the program. For the 2025-26 school year, I've consulted with Jaclyn Valley and Amy Dennis, and we anticipate, starting the year, with as many as 137 preschoolers in our integrated program. And that would include children with IEPs and peer partners. So because of our enrollment projection, we believe that we will need to add two half-day integrated preschool sessions to our program. All right. At the K-2 level, we have specialized program, the Developmental Learning Program, or DLP program. That includes seven specialized classes with opportunities for students to participate in general education settings. The environment is a small group environment, highly structured, and very supportive and very flexible to meet the children's needs. There's a focus, again, on students' IEP goals and objectives with an emphasis on developing skills for inclusion in the general education classroom. Our current enrollment in the DLP program is 52 students. We have seven special education teachers, and again, a variety of related service and support staff. At the grade three through five level, we have our Educational Counseling Program. That includes two specialized classrooms with opportunities, again, for students to participate in general education settings. Again, those classes are, it's a small group setting, highly structured, and very supportive. Again, there's a focus on each student's IEP goals and objectives. In the ECP program, there's a particular emphasis on social, emotional, and behavioral skills. We have two special education teachers in the program and a variety of related service and support staff. And I would like to point out the role of our social worker. We have a social worker who is very involved in our ECP program at the grade three through five level. She's an integral part of the program. Not only does she support students directly, but she also collaborates with school staff, general education teachers, administrators, families, and any outside service providers that the children have. So she's really an amazing part of our program. Our current enrollment in ECP, we have 16 students. For the 25-26 school year, we anticipate, starting with eight additional students for our ECP program. And because of this, we will need to add an additional ECP classroom. Also, at the 3-5 level, we have our Intermediate Adaptive Learning Program. This is one specialized classroom, again, with opportunities for students to be included in general education settings. It's a small group setting, and there's a focus on each student's IEP goals and objectives with an emphasis on communication, self-help, and functional academic skills. We currently have eight students enrolled in this program. We have one special education teacher and a variety of related service and support staff. And finally, at the 3-5 level, we have our ASD program. That includes three specialized classrooms with opportunities for inclusion in general education settings. It's a small group setting. It's very structured, very supportive, very flexible. There's a focus on IEP goals and objectives with an emphasis on communication and social pragmatic skills, foundational academic skills, and self-help skills. We currently have 23 students in the program, three special education teachers, and a variety of related service and support staff. Now on to the secondary level. At our secondary level, and that would include grades six through 12, we have our SOAR program. Our SOAR program includes five specialized classrooms with opportunities for inclusion in general education settings. The classes are smaller, they're structured, and it's a very supportive and responsive learning environment. Again, we focus on IEP goals and objectives with an emphasis on social, emotional, and behavioral skills. Our current enrollment is 56 students. We have five special education teachers and a variety of related service and support staff, including, because we're at the secondary level, a transition coordinator who is available to support students and school teams when needed. For the 25-26 school year, we will need two social workers dedicated to support the SOAR program, to meet the needs of the students and to support families and staff. And again, our collaboration and partnership with families is so critical for students in all buildings, but especially within our SOAR program. And our social workers are really a critical piece of that. Also, at the secondary level, we have our Adaptive Learning Program. That includes four specialized classrooms. Again, the students can participate in general education activities and settings. There's also a focus on the IEP goals and objectives, and we're focusing on functional academic, transition, and independent living skills. Currently, we have 46 students, four special education teachers, and again, a variety of related service and support staff, including our transition coordinator. All right. For students ages 18 to 22, we have our Enfield Transitional Learning Academy, also referred to as our ETLA program. Our ETLA program is a specialized program focused on each student's IEP goals with an emphasis on transition. And that includes independent living, community participation, and pre-employment skills. Within our ETLA program, students gain valuable experience at job sites within the Enfield community. We have some great partnerships with local businesses. Also, students participate in recreational activities with staff and students at Springfield College. Our current ETLA enrollment is 31 students. We have two special education teachers and a variety of related service and support staff. And again, you're going to see that transition coordinator. She's such an essential player in all of our secondary programs. And it's true for ETLA as well. So next, Lauren and Brian are going to provide us with an update on the progress that we've made with our Eagle Academy.
So as you saw on the continuum earlier, Eagle Academy is a separate program housed in a separate building here in district. New visitors to our building are often surprised. There is, in fact, no secret second floor. It does look like it's a very large building, but there's no second floor to us. We have four classrooms and currently have a total of 26 students. Each classroom has one special education teacher and support staff. Schedules for students are focused on both their academic needs as well as, again, their social, emotional, and behavioral needs. In addition to our special education teachers, we have one full-time and one part-time social worker. As in our other special education programs, we work with a variety of related services staff, speech, OT, et cetera, as required by students' IEPs. We also work with a consulting psychiatrist when needed.
So one thing we're very proud of at the Eagle Academy is to be able to give our students school and community opportunities. So when students participate, or they attend outplacement schools, usually those schools run a little bit later in the day. There's travel time to take into consideration, and they're just not part of the Enfield community. So they miss out on a lot of these things. So being at Eagle Academy allows opportunities for students for a variety of things. When we first opened Eagle Academy, I had one student come up to me and say, hey, I want to play football. One of our BTs at the time was assistant coach. I'm like, let's get it going. And, you know, he participated in football that year, and it was a fantastic experience. Fortunately, next year was COVID, so there really wasn't a season. But it still gave him the opportunity. And we also had a student participate in basketball that year when we first opened up. You know, and it's an incentive for kids. I'm not just talking about sports, but other opportunities. But we did have one student that really wanted to play football at the high school, transitioned over there, and he's been playing football for three years. And he came from Eagle Academy, and he's one of the star players on the team. And also, what's big is the students can participate in activities such as prom, homecoming, clubs, pep rallies. We've had students come up to me like, I really want to go to homecoming. Oh, yeah, no problem, you know? Either I got to attend or BT. So we provided the whole support, you know, if needed, for the student. But really encouraged that for the students. And we do keep in mind that they do have to meet the behavioral and academic expectations as all the other students, you know, at the, say, high school if they want to participate in those activities. Over the year, we've done some volunteer opportunities at the Enfield Food Shelf, and that kind ties into some of the unemployment training opportunities. So Julie, you speak about our transition coordinator, and she's been very great in helping us secure some job sites over the years, such as the Growth Company, Windsor Public Library, and also True Value Hardware at the time. And, you know, the proudest thing we could say is the kids will graduate from Enfield High School. They'll be able to attend a high school ceremony. They can go to the senior, all the senior activities and participate in Safe Grad. So I think that that's a huge thing where they just would not be able to do that if they were sent to an outplacement school, so.
So as we were creating Eagle years ago, our main focus was to provide our Enfield students with quality programming here in town. Previously, as special education teachers in Enfield and having worked with students that had been outplaced, I think I can speak for both Brian and myself when I say we knew that in many cases, we could do it better here if given the opportunity. One of the ways we try to do this is by creating strong relationships with our students, their families, and their outside providers. It really does take a village, and we work hard to keep all the team members of our students' team up to date and in communication with everyone. While we are busting at the seams at times, we utilize all of our spaces to help support our students, whether it's classroom space, related service space, or our quiet, alternative workspace offered to students. Every inch of our building is thought about and scheduled for maximum use. Ultimately, the goal of our students is to gain the skills necessary to return to their homeschool successfully, whether that be a school here in Enfield or a school in other districts. We have had that happen as well. Having Eagle here in town allows us to plan these transitions with a slow rollout, starting with partial days at their homeschool when ready prior to transitioning full-time, again, with a focus on successful transitions for the students. As we've experienced in the last few years, the need for this type of programming is there, not only for Enfield, but for many of our surrounding districts.
And if we look at some of the success that Eagle Academy has had in the six years that we've been open. So we've served over, 76 students have been enrolled in Eagle Academy at some point or another over those six years. So you'd have to consider that those students would have been outplaced if Eagle Academy didn't exist. So whether it be a short period of time, you know, maybe we've had students enroll and maybe just happened to move out of district or move out of state, or students have then been there for an extended period of time. But that's, you know, the total enrollment that we've had. 26 of those 76 are students that returned from outplacement. So those are ones where we've done site visit. Students have done well enough at that. Or, you know, we like to say that we provide a comparable program to some of those outplacement schools, and we're able to return those students back to Enfield Public Schools. 18 of our students have returned to their great, specific homeschool, and we're currently working on transition some students right now. Proud to say that we, you know, have some students attending classes at JFK also. Second half of the semester, we'll have some students starting over at the Enfield High School to slowly make that transition. Eight students have graduated from Eagle Academy since we've opened. And, you know, overall, we've served 12 students from other districts at one point or another. And just a reminder, the overall goal of our program is for students to successfully return to their great, specific homeschool. And that's what we're always aiming for. We set the bar and expectations high so that the students are ready socially, emotionally, behaviorally, academically, to be able to be successful when they return to the homeschool.
All right. So as we look ahead to next school year, we want to continue to meet the needs of our students and build upon the successes that we've had with our Eagle Academy. For the 2025-26 school year, we will need to add a full-time social worker to meet the needs of students and to provide that critical support to our families and to our staff. Looking further into the future, if we were to expand our Eagle Academy, we would need to add the following. A facility where we had additional physical space so that we could have more classrooms, a gymnasium, a library, a cafeteria, and workspaces for our students and our staff. We'd also need additional instructional and support staff to work with our students and additional instructional supplies. So our hope for the future, our hope for the future is to continue to offer quality educational programming for students with IEPs in Enfield, to expand our Eagle Academy, to increase our programming options for students in district, and also to support our neighboring districts by accepting more of their students as needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So any questions, comments, Mr. Cover?
All right. Thank you, guys. That was a very informative presentation. Director Carroll, I think you got a voice made for narration. Just wanted to say that out there as you were going. I was like, wow, all right, yeah. Definitely either rehearsed that or that was, you had that down pat. So I had a few questions, and I guess I'll start with my ones on Eagle Academy. So I believe the slide said the current student count was 26. Is that currently the capacity for Eagle? Or do we have space to go up?
We currently have 26 students in our Eagle Academy. So in terms of, do we have capacity to enroll more students? I think at this point in time, we're meeting the needs of the students that we have, right? I think if we were looking to increase our enrollment, we really would need additional space. That's my perspective on it. And Lauren and Brian, do you have any additional thoughts you'd like to share regarding that question?
Yeah, so, you know, we have a lot of more secondary students now. There's some students that have been with us since the middle school age. At one point, you know, we did have 30, so it does fluctuate by a few numbers. You know, we could have kids move into district, and they need a specialized program. They would come to Eagle Academy. So it kind of ebbs and flows with the tide. But 30 was kind of like that, that max. And it depends on the supports and services that a student needs. And that's also a big factor that plays into it. But there's always wiggle room for a few extra numbers. But no, we're not looking to, you know, we can't do 40, 45. That's just not feasible or reasonable.
Okay, that makes sense. And I believe I saw reports, I believe, from previous years where we had 29, and that was the only reason I asked. So understanding that, yeah, there's a handful that could change. So, and I guess I wanted to ask too as well, just in regards to Eagle. So have we ever had to, just on the note of capacity, have we ever had to outplace a student because we didn't have space in Eagle? Or if they qualified for Eagle and we could provide services there, have we always assigned them to Eagle?
So I think, to answer that question, what I'll start by saying is that placement decisions are always made by each student's planning and placement team. And they consider each student's unique circumstances. So when the planning and placement team, and that's the family, that's the school administrator, the special ed teacher, related service providers, gen ed teacher, when they're making those decisions, they consider a lot of information. They consider evaluation reports. They consider the child's performance in school. They consider progress monitoring data, a whole variety of sources of information. And then they make their placement decision accordingly. So if the planning and placement team believes that a placement at Eagle Academy is appropriate, then that placement would be made. If the planning and placement team believes that the student requires a school outside of the district or a special ed teacher, the district, more specialized school, then the team would make that recommendation accordingly as well. So, does that answer your question?
It does. That makes sense. Thank you. And actually, that tied into one of my other notes that I wanted to ask about, just for, you know, for, I guess, for further clarity and for the, you know, public awareness too. So you had talked about PPTs according to state guidelines, and how placement decisions are made, and you just kind of elaborated how those teams are, who sits on those teams. So just to, I guess, get a better understanding. So when the PPT meets and makes a decision for, you know, an IEP and goals and objectives, is it a, again, not to tie in like Robert's rules, but is it a vote? Is it a unanimous consent? Or is it like a majority rules? Like, how does a PPT come to be and then leave with a decision? Like, if there's one person that doesn't agree with a specific thing, how does that get adjudicated? And then how does that move forward?
To answer your question, I'll go back to my previous response. So the members of the planning and placement team at the PPT, at the meeting, consider a variety of sources of information, and they engage in a review and a discussion of the information at hand. Ideally, that's a very collaborative process, and the team makes a recommendation. In the event that the planning and placement team makes a recommendation which the parents or guardians disagree with, the family has a copy of their procedural safeguards, and that document outlines the steps that can be taken should the parents or guardians disagree with a PPT recommendation. So we have our procedural safeguards that we share with all of our families, and it's also posted on our district website.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. One of the other things I wanted to talk about, or I guess have you elaborate, there's a couple of programs, and use the phrase, Specialized Classrooms with Opportunities for Inclusion in the General Education Settings. I believe that was SOAR, ALP, and maybe a couple others. So I guess, can you unpack, what does that mean? Do they report to the specialized class, and they have to spend X number of hours in the general ed? Is it, do they tell their teacher, I want to go to a general ed classroom? Or like, can you just, I guess, elaborate and expand on what those opportunities for inclusion are?
Of course. So again, we have to take it back to the PPT meeting, right? So as I said earlier, when PPT members are in that PPT meeting, they're reviewing a lot of information, and they're making a lot of decisions, right? One of the decisions that they might make in a PPT meeting is, will the child or will the student have access to the general education classroom? And if so, for what purpose, right? And that is reported on the IEP as time with non-disabled peers, right? And we outline what that will look like for the child. So to answer your question, if a student participates in the general education activities in that setting, that would be in accordance with the recommendations made by the PPT, and it would be outlined in that child's IEP.
Thank you. So just the last couple of things, and I know not to harp on IEP info, but I think this is good information, obviously, for the board and for the public as well. So with the students that have IEPs, I know you talked about the ebb and flow of students coming in, students being identified early on through birth of three, other things. There is some, you know, students that come in, students that come out. My understanding is that, like, the PPTs are evaluated every year, correct?
The IEPs?
Yeah, IEPs. Would they be every year, they're kind of reevaluated?
We have an annual review, yes.
Annual. So is there generally, like, students that you see, and I know Eagle talked about students going back to their schools, students that either, like, complete their IEP, or fulfill all the goals and objectives, and then are transitioned out, and like, the IEP is closed and not renewed? Or can you kind of talk about how that process would work? And I don't know if you had any numbers to kind of expand on that?
Okay. So I can certainly talk about the process. I think what you're referring to is what we term as an exit from special education. And typically, how that is done is the child undergoes a reevaluation, right? So every three years, we're required to determine whether or not that student continues to qualify for special education and related services. We're required to reevaluate every three years, but we can move that up, right? If the team agrees, we can move up that reevaluation. So as part of that reevaluation process, the team members would recommend assessments, and the parent would provide consent, and that child would be evaluated. And then the team would reconvene, and it would, the team would make the determination of whether or not that student continued to qualify for special education and related services. After reviewing the information and the student's progress, if the team determined that the student no longer meets eligibility criteria, then the recommendation would be made to exit that student from special education and related services.
Okay, thank you. And again, I didn't know if you knew, because I know we're talking about needs and forecasting, so generally, we're inferring that we're seeing a growth in that. So is there any statistics or any foresight you see of a growth in exits, or it's really the predominant exit is probably just people graduating and exiting out, if that makes sense?
Right. We do have students with IEPs who will be graduating from high school, of course. We also have students in our transition program, our 18 to 22 program, who will be aging out, right? And we're very proud of our students when they do that. In terms of the projection for the upcoming year, I don't have that ready for tonight, but we could certainly provide you that information via our superintendent.
Okay, no, that's fine. I know my main focus was, you were talking about some of the slides, like the current enrollment, the projected enrollment. So I guess what I was trying to expand is, is that all just new intakes? Or is it, you know, if it's growing by three, are we expecting four intakes and one exit?
Right.
That's kind of what I was just getting at, the methodology of that current enrollment versus what you were projecting on your slides?
Right. So in terms of what we're projecting on our slides, for example, if you're referring to our ECP program, we're anticipating that the 16 students we have in the two programs right now, that enrollment number will continue. And in addition to that, we'll have an extra eight students who will require an ECP class, a program. And so that's why we've requested a third ECP class for next school year.
All right. Thank you. That makes sense. Last question I had, and this is probably another IEP question that might be, you know, familiar to people with, you know, families and that. But so my understanding, you talked about, like, the goals and how it talks about time in each classroom. So my understanding is it'll have, like, required services, but will it ever designate, like, optional services for a student? Like, hey, the, you know, the school district must provide A, B, and C. But like, would the IEP or the PPT say, we also recommend D and E, to kind of make it like an optional part of that? Does that question make sense? Is that generally how you see the structure of an IEP, or is it always just, this is what the district must provide, and that's the only instruction on there?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, the members of the planning and placement team review the information pertaining to that student's performance, and they make recommendations for services for a lot of things, for eligibility, goals and objectives, services, accommodations and modifications, et cetera. So whatever the members of the planning and placement team recommend, it is clearly documented on the IEP. And then that document is a document which informs how we program for students, what we're required to provide to that student.
Yeah, I guess my point of clarification is to make, so is everything in that document, then we'd consider that like a mandate, for lack of a better sense, not that something that, hey, we recommend, but if we can't meet the need, then we can't meet the need?
That's, that's what we're going to be required to provide.
Yes.
So that is a legal document that, and I'm watching all the supervisors, that what we put in there, we must provide.
Okay. No, that's, that's perfect. And that's, again, to clarify that there isn't something in there that might be strongly suggested.
Consider that the student's protections.
Yes.
Right? That is the contract that we said that we will provide. That is their federal protections.
And I think the key word here is, what's in the document is required. The student requires that, and we must provide what's in the document.
Okay, perfect. And that's, that's what I was looking for at the end there. So, okay, I believe that's all I have for now. Again, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Kover. Any thoughts? Ms. Pickett?
All right. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you for not only giving us a program overview, but also, like, a 101 on special ed. I encourage my fellow Board of Ed members, there's a lot of publicly available information on what is an IEP, what is a PPT, how does this process work. There's also a consistent form and platform that districts have to use to upload IEPs called CTSEDS. I know we've had discussions about the length of our meetings, and some of this, I think, could have been addressed through some simple website links and resources. But with that being said, I'm going to share some comments, and actually, I don't anticipate, like, you don't need to respond to anything. This is Amanda just speaking out loud. And some of the comments and questions I have, I think, are related to some of the budget conversation coming our way. So I think it's important that I make them here, and relate to maybe some other agenda items. So one, I want to thank you for reviewing the continuum of placements and understanding with the least restrictive environment. I know we might be doing well within district placements of students, but the reality is we have a high rate of identifying students. So over 21, or close to 21% of our students are identified as having IEPs. Statewide average is around 15.6%. So for me, when I think about what we need to be having a larger discussion around inclusion, and when we think of the continuum of LRE, the reality is special ed students are general ed students first. That that is, every student is a general ed student. And thinking around the mandates around inclusion, the reality is the districts, the state, and feds want students in the least restrictive environment. I think the goal is, like, 80% of the time and the majority of your students with like peers. So if we want that to work, and we know that it works when kids are with peers, we have to make sure that our school-wide classrooms, spaces, all of that stuff, is equipped for our most high-need students. So I say this with some forecasting of work in our school modernization by, I know that there's desire to expand Eagle Academy and need to make some expansions. I also just can't help but put some caution out there that we can't invest in creating facilities without investing in the resources it takes for high-quality programming, and without investing in general ed and our classroom sizes, our support services, or else we risk creating facilities that just serve as students that we have actually underserved. So I just need to say that out loud, that we need to be thinking about all of our students and thinking about how programming is provided from MTSS intervention services all the way through special ed. Actually, I know, I see Amy Dennis here, that they're helping families understand even the continuum prior to special ed, like, what is 504 versus special ed? What is MTSS and tiered support and intervention? Why do I access those services? Why don't I? I would just say, if we spent more resources in that, we might have lower costs in special ed. So I think having some of that understanding is important. You also mentioned the importance of family partnership. I'm going to make some more comments on that. I think that is huge. I only hear good things about how we work with our families, especially around our specialized programs. So thank you to that staff, the teachers, and the administrators who support our students. The other thing that I think is important, and you spoke this, your goal is for students to go back to their general ed classroom settings. So I think that is another check for us, that in order for that goal to happen, we have to invest in public education. We have to invest in general ed teachers, support staff. And that goes to my question, but I think it was explicit in slides, but I'm going to name it explicitly. I believe we contract with a lot of our support services. I'm going to say that that impacts quality of programming. Collaborative planning time, understanding school-wide culture and supports and practices, having our own EPS hired staff providing services matters. And I think that could actually potentially be a cost-saving, but also an outcome saver. Like, they know our kids, they know our staff. And then, I think that's all I have on this. Thank you so much for this information, and I am thankful for the information you provided.
Dr. Callen?
Thanks for this great presentation. It was really very informative. Just a question and then more or less a comment. With respect to preschool, peer partners, what is the role of the peer partner?
Yeah, great question. So in our integrated preschool program, we have children with IEPs, and then we have peer partners. Those are children without IEPs. And so it's the integrated preschool program, meaning that those children are in the classes together.
That's, that's great, that you're including that group of students as well. I think that's terrific. And then the other question slash comment that I had was, is there an opportunity at IEPs for involvement of physicians or pediatricians? Are they invited? Is a suggestion made to the parents? And I know that the answer is probably, yeah, but that never happens because pediatricians aren't paid for that. But I hate to be, but it's really true. We're not reimbursed for those services, and it's really hard to get out of the office to attend something like that. So logistically, but I was just wondering, if that problem could be solved, and I'll get to that in a second, is there an opportunity for pediatrician participation in IEPs?
In a PPT meeting?
Yes.
Well, families, parents, and legal guardians are welcome to bring anyone they like to a PPT meeting.
Great.
So if a pediatrician were to participate, it would be the request of the parent or guardian.
Okay, great. So the reason I bring it up is I think pediatricians could potentially make a big contribution. For example, for children who are on certain medications for seizure disorders or something like that, sometimes those medications can have a significant effect on cognitive performance. And it would be important for the pediatrician to know that, what the child's IEP looks like. And also, it would be helpful for the school to get that input from the pediatrician. But if the pediatrician were to get that information that the child is not functioning quite as well as the school would like to see, the first thing he would probably want to do is review the medications that the child is on, and see if there's an opportunity for making certain adjustments. Likewise, if children have certain diagnoses, or not diagnoses, but questions of attentional issues, again, the pediatrician could be very, very supportive in terms of prescription of certain medications. And then lastly, pediatricians are becoming more and more involved in the social-emotional status of their patients. And so they may have an opportunity to contribute to the, to the behavioral health management of special need students. I think, I know all this sounds very theoretical, but payment plans are beginning to change in pediatrics. You know, historically, pediatricians are paid for office encounters and hospital encounters. And they're not reimbursed for anything else. But payment strategies are changing. For example, telehealth medicine might offer an opportunity for a pediatrician to participate in an IEP. So I do think that there's a role, a potentially very significant role, for pediatricians. Also, I just want to mention in passing that the STOW, Early Learning Center, is now having pediatrician residents rotate through STOW, and they're learning all about IEPs. And so I think that's an enormous benefit for medical education, because when residents go through their residency in pediatrics, they learn all about management of meningitis and acid-base exchanges, and they don't learn a damn thing about 504s. So I think we're doing a tremendous service, and hopefully, some of those pediatric residents will think about coming back to Enfield to establish a practice here. Knocking wood.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. Anybody next? Mr. Rider?
Julie, Lauren, Brian, Amy, I wanted to thank all of you and your caring team of people that you have that work with our students. More than 20% of our students have an IEP. It's more than one out of five. And I don't think everybody wraps their head around that yet. And also, Dr. Callen, like, not only outside pediatricians, but if you have an outside counselor that your students are working with, or an outside psychiatrist or psychologist, again, it's up to the parents, you know, again, it's up to the parents, you know, that they can invite, you know, their team into these PPT meetings. I don't know how you manage that, each of you, just the sheer numbers. So, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of, you know, that, those 20% of the families out there that utilize your services. Thank you very much for everything you do for our kids. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Black?
I just wanted to say thank you for being here this evening and giving us a snapshot of also the future needs of what you guys are looking for. And some of those supports we had, and some of those supports were lost. And I'm going to agree a lot with what Ms. Pickett said about the continuity of having in-house counselors and not having to go outside to use professional services for our students and also for, to build that rapport with our staff. I think we are very lucky to have the special ed staff that we have. We're very lucky to have the special ed families that we have. And I know that day in and day out, our special ed staff tries to be the best staff that they can be. I know your caseloads are high. I know that people have an image in their mind of what a special ed student looks like. That is not the case. I think that we've grown, right, to different areas of special ed classifications. You have kids that more fall in the social-emotional learning. You have kids on the ASD. You have kids with physical disabilities. It's just a broad spectrum. And trying to find the right fit and the right supports for each individual student is not an easy task. And then, knowing that that can change in two months or a year. So, I really do appreciate the work that our special ed department does for the town or for Enfield Public Schools, and please know that day in and day out. So, thank you.
Jean, did you want to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Carol, could you explain again, what is the specialized focus on the adaptive learning program?
Certainly. Let me look over to that slide. At what grade level are you referring to?
Secondary.
Secondary. Let me see what I have here. So, our adaptive learning program at the secondary level, and that would be for grades six through 12, there's a focus on each student's IEP goals and objectives with a particular emphasis, we said, on functional academic skills, transition skills, and especially independent living skills as well.
Okay. I just wanted to know what their, the focus was for that particular program.
Anything else?
How, I guess my question is, like, how many levels below would an adaptive learning program be? You know, how would be servicing the students? Like, is it two grade levels below, you know, a regular ed student?
So, there's no set response to that question. What I, what I can say is that when the members of the planning and placement team hold their PPT meeting, they consider the students' needs and what type of specialized instruction they need and what their IEP goals and objectives should be. And then, they make their recommendations for programming accordingly. And so, if members of the PPT had reviewed that information and made recommendations for goals and objectives that were very transition-focused, for example, that were focused on functional academics, pre-employment skills, independent living skills, community participation. So, if that were the focus, then the PPT could recommend, might recommend placement in the adaptive learning program. And then, they would consider, you know, at what point would the student require or benefit from access to general education settings and activities? So, those are all decisions that members of the PPT make. Did I answer your question?
Okay. Yes, I was just trying to clarify, because you had so many different special ed programs. I just wanted to see what the focus for that particular program was. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Jean. Anybody else? Okay, so, just, well, first off, thank you for the presentation. It was, like, well-needed and well-overdue, and I thought it was super informative, amazing information. Thank you. Can you tell me, what does, in terms of support staff, what does BCBA stand for again?
A Board Certified Behavior Analyst.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so, echoing Scott, I really wanted to thank you and the coordinators and the directors and the teachers and the support staff. What you do for our district cannot be underscored, highlighted enough. You are a serious backbone of our school system and our community. And, you know, as a parent who's been there, done that, still doing it, and has friends who are in the same situation, we are extremely thankful for you putting our students first. It's amazing what you guys do. Thank you very much for that. And, you know, I don't think Eagle Academy can be praised enough and shouted to the rooftops enough because we have kept our kids here. Just by the state rate of 4.7% and our rate of 2.5% on outplacements tells a huge story of us wanting to educate our kids here because they're home and they're with us. And it's amazing to me that, you know, we've had this program for a while, and a lot of people talk about it, and we still have to explain to the state what we're doing and the good things that we're doing here. And they always seem to be so like, oh, we never knew about that. Well...
Well, it's interesting that you bring that up, because I was gonna wait till the very end to throw my comments and my thanks to Julie and her team. Because earlier today, I did have a conversation with the commissioner from the State Department of Education. It is something we've been trying to do for a few months. So, since she happened to be on the phone, and we were having, or actually, a Teams call. As part of our conversation, she alerted me of some bond, some potential bonding that is gonna be coming down the road from the state for districts that are identified as alliance districts. And part of that conversation was she asked me what our percentage of outplacements were. And she had to ask me a second time after I repeated it because our percentage is incredibly low, especially when you compare us to neighboring districts. She was so impressed that we are gonna have some future communication, and she potentially wants to come out and visit some of our programs because, as she even said, well, you guys seem to be doing it the right way. So, it is, it's a huge testament to Julie and all of her team and all of the supports that we provide. So, you know, I want to thank her, you know, as, as we've gotten to know each other over these first two, three, four months. She does have a wonderful conversation voice, and in terms of her recordings, she absolutely is a planner and is incredibly well-thought-out about all of our needs for the, for all of our students that are identified. So...
Yeah, I mean, you guys definitely do not have a nine-to-five job. You're on all the time. And I just want to thank you for everything that you guys have done, and an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Makew, you are on for the superintendent's report. Well, I guess students are up first, really.
No, I don't think I am on just yet. I think we're gonna turn it over to Izzy and Olivia.
Okay, first things first, we have our midterms coming up this following week. The week that we have our Monday off because of Martin Luther King Day and inauguration day. The 23rd is when our midterms start. There should be an email in your students' Outlook accounts, as well as in the newsletter from January. Those days are also gonna be early dismissal days, as in the afternoon, we have makeup exams. So, it'll be a grab-and-go lunches for anyone that usually gets hot lunch. We also have our new semester coming up when the midterms end. So, our new semester starts January 29th. And then, going on to February, we have a presentation geared toward seniors talking about Safe Driving, which is our Save a Life Tour. I know I did it last year, so live, you're in for a treat, because I actually really liked that one. It's like an interactive type of presentation. So, they're gonna be talking about the dangers of impaired driving and distracted driving and all that kind of stuff. And then, we also have, February 7th, our Black History Symposium, teaching about Afro-Latino music and history. And speaking about, about Black history, we also have a lot of open spots still for Black and Brown Student Union. So, if you know any students that would like to be in a leadership position, because I am leaving next year, so I need kind of younger students to get involved so I can pass it on to other people, please tell them to join, or at least follow us on Instagram or Facebook. We have a Facebook now. Or, it's EHS, Black and Brown Student Union. So, please follow us. We're still fundraising this year for our senior souls. So, we need lots of money for those, because those are expensive.
Okay, so, we have the Programs of Studies Night on February 5th at 7:00 PM in the Enfield High Auditorium. And this is just a chance for incoming freshmen and current students to learn about some of the course offerings we have. Also, ways that you can get involved in the high school with sports, clubs, and you can meet some of the staff and some of the people that have leadership positions in those clubs and sports. Course selection will start February 3rd, I believe, and allows for students to make their decisions for next year. So, seniors, you don't have to worry about that. National Honor Society will be having a book drive outside the main entrance of Enfield High on February 2nd. And just for, there's not much going on with sports, but boys hockey will be having their rival game on Friday against Trittown at 7:50. So, it's a later game, but it's usually a big, good game that everyone likes to go watch. And for the class of 2026, we're having a prom committee meeting on January 21st, right after school in the library. So, if you guys are interested in coming to help out, get a say in what you want in your prom, don't forget to show up. Everyone is welcome. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Is there a hockey game at Twin Rings? Do you know? Okay.
Those are really good games against Trittown.
Awesome. Go ahead, Mr. Makew.
Any, I didn't know if there was questions for the ladies. No?
I think we're good.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, I have a few other items to update the board regarding. So, I'm gonna go out of the order that I actually put these down on. Just to piggyback on some of the comments and questions that came up, because the work related to MTSS does continue. Michelle Middleton and her team continue to work through the committee that she has to update the handbook and the procedures. And I think that is, I think it's a very important point that was brought up because that is the group that will help us to better provide the interventions and support services to students so we can catch them earlier and catch them up earlier so that hopefully, potentially, we'll have less students being identified for special education. So, that work does continue within the district. She's also continuing with her steering committee related to the vision of the graduate work. We had some more work completed during the administrative council meeting that was held last week. As we identified the five categories in the subsets of skills, some feedback was provided, and we're now at the point of working on acronyms. And that will help us all remember the vision of the graduate work so that we can summarize it more easily for you. So, the work does continue, and I know, not my specialty, but we're gonna be also looking at some pictorial representations to help bring this together for you. So, more, more information to come as we move forward with that. Budget has already come up, as you mentioned with, as Julie was taking us through her presentation, and I was getting winks from certain people in the front row about, you heard that, right? So, budget is obviously fast and furious right now, related to fiscal year '26. In the building of that, you're going to be receiving additional presentations over the course of the next few board meetings that are related to the overall budget. I will present sort of where we stand at the next board meeting on the 28th, and I'll do the initial presentation. Obviously, you'll then have some time to digest, look it over. We're in the process of, Kathy keeps reminding me to get her the information as quickly as possible so that we can provide you with as much information as possible. So, we are putting together some binders for you. So, you will receive not just a summary, you'll have a presentation, you'll have a summary, you'll have an explanation, you'll have every account line that we go through, you'll have personnel breakdown, you'll have an enrollment breakdown, and you'll have some additional district and state information that will be provided in your, in your binders. So, you will be receiving a whole bunch of information. The information that I provide to you, we will also make publicly available, place it onto the website so that way whoever wants to, you know, spend a nice cold Saturday evening looking over the budget, they may do so. But we will have that with there as well. And lastly, obviously, an update related to, and I know there's a number of folks that will want to speak to this this evening, is, obviously, last Monday, the 6th, the town council related to the resolution that was passed for the pre-K-25 elementary schools in the Eagle Academy therapeutic program, the pre-referendum committee that was created. So, I did send out a message to the community earlier today. So, we did, we did push that out for everybody. I have received, you know, a few different emails, and everybody who sends me their emails, they do get a response. Sometimes it takes me a day or so to get to it because I want to make sure that I provide them with, you know, a response to all of the different questions or concerns they may have. That new committee, as I've mentioned within the responses to the emails, that is a separate committee from the work that was done previously by the school modernization committee, clearly. The goal, the, my conversations with folks has always been about the fact that that modernization committee did a tremendous amount of work. They spent a year, if not more, studying, completing a feasibility, coming up with, you know, doing site visits, which, you know, we've also continued to do. And there was a final recommendation that was provided. But we now need to continue to move forward from there. So, that is sort of where we stand with the pre-referendum committee. I want to be sure that, I know you folks know, because I've mentioned it, but the public is also aware, that there needs to be public sessions to continue to happen as part of this process. We need to continue to gain input. We need to continue to gain opinion and perspective about what we want for the schools. Sort of the end game here, the end result, personal goal for myself, I know for a number of people who have worked on this in the past, is always to not only just upgrade our facilities, but upgrade our facilities and make sure we're set up for the long term. We don't want to have to go through this again in another five years because it's gonna take five years to go through this, if not six, seven. I mean, it's a, this is a lengthy, lengthy process. We are, for those who are not aware, please take some time to read through the message that I sent out. It takes you through it. You know, between pre-referendum committee, and then architects, and then potential referendums, and applying to the state, and then, then it has to go to the legislature. It's, it is a long time to get through that, that piece. And we are desperately in need of, needing to do something to address specifically the elementary schools. Obviously, JFK is a big, new, beautiful building that's been updated, the high school as well. But it's now time to sort of concentrate on those elementary schools. So, again, years to go on that. I'm excited that it's a first step that we've been able to take. And again, if anybody has any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to give me a call in the office or shoot me an email. And again, I'll reply back to you as soon as I can. I think that will do it for me this evening.
All right, we're gonna move on to audiences. Thank you. Okay, so, it's basically, all speakers must identify themselves by name and relationship to the district, and everybody gets four minutes. So, we will start with Kelsey McGuire Bruce.
All right, I'm good. Okay.
All right, I'm good, okay. Kelsey McGuire Bruce, 63 Neelens Road. Good evening. I'm here tonight to briefly share some of the challenges our schools are facing due to the budget cuts. The examples I'll discuss come from across the district. First, I want to acknowledge the leadership of our superintendent and assistant superintendent, Mr. Makiyo and Mr. Longi. Thank you for your dedication to rebuild and restore. Your hard work is greatly appreciated. I also want to express how proud I am of my colleagues who are facing these challenges with patience and grace. Many of us are trying to maintain a positive attitude. However, this very attitude may be why the full extent of our struggles isn't always visible. As we look ahead to the next budget cycle, it's important to recognize that the cuts made this year have had a profound impact. And while we are doing our best, not everything is going well. Schools that have lost their behavior technicians and counselors are relying on bare bones crisis intervention teams to manage student crises and ensure safety. With limited staff, special education teachers and SLPs who are often the only other staff trained in PMT are stepping in. The impacts their ability, this impacts their ability to provide services mandated in students' IEPs and raises concerns about safety of both staff and students. Last year, the primary schools were able to provide targeted interventions for kindergarten classes, including weekly visits by interventionists and the ability to pull struggling students mid-year to work on basic numeracy skills. However, due to the budget cuts, all kindergarten interventions have been eliminated, severely reducing support for early learners who need it most. An elementary school intervention concern is that last year during ELA and math intervention, support staff came in to assist and the student to teacher ratio was six to one. This year, the structure of support staff has changed due to the budget cuts and now the ratio during intervention time is 20 to one. At one school, over 95% of suspensions originated from a classroom with 29 students. With only three classes, it's no longer feasible to separate students as we usually do. One teacher is unable to manage the disruptive behaviors while delivering effective instruction. As a result, students are suffering as they are not receiving the level of academic support that they need to succeed. At this school, the academic tutors are tasked with doing the work of paraprofessionals because they're so short-saft and overloaded with students. This is impacting students because the tutors are unable to provide service and support for students who need it because they are acting as paras. The increase in class size is one of the many impacts on our high school and other schools. Class size has increased from 22 to 28 students and is significantly impacting teaching quality and student outcomes. With larger class sizes, teachers have less time for one-on-one support, especially for students needing extra help. And a subject reliant on critical thinking at the high school, managing 28 students becomes much more difficult, leading to increased disruption in a less productive learning environment. At another school, the loss of positions has led to high numbers of special education and ELL students in classrooms. For example, a fourth grade teacher has seven students with IEPs up from three last year. She must create individual plans, track goals, implement accommodations, and support students across varying levels. Due to recent cuts, the middle school team model was eliminated. Previously, this structure enabled teachers to collaborate effectively in order to support students' academic, behavioral, and emotional success. Without this framework, many students are now struggling in these areas. Teachers no longer have the dedicated time to identify and support these struggling students, leading to increased disruptive behaviors and challenges. This lack of coordination has made it hard to provide timely, effective support for those who need it most. In closing, these examples I've shared tonight are just a few of the challenges our colleagues across the district are facing. There are many more stories, many more struggles and hard realities that aren't always visible but are deeply felt in our schools every day. We put on a brave face, doing our best to keep things running smoothly for our students, but it is essential that we recognize the true impact of these budget cuts. The cuts are real, the consequences are far reaching. Our teachers and staff and students are doing everything we can, but we need to acknowledge that this is not sustainable without further support. We must come together to address these challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Okay, Jessica Sewell.
My name is Jessica Sewell. My address is 10 Brook Road. I am a special education teacher at Parkman School and I was a member of the original school modernization committee. Mr. Ryder, I even found my name tag. In March 2023, the school modernization committee began the comprehensive work on the issue of modernizing our elementary schools. We brought together diverse voices, teachers, parents, community advocates, architects, and education experts. Together, we conducted research, funded, and completed a feasibility study, made many multiple school visits, developed recommendations based on stakeholder needs, and presented findings to the Board of Ed and to the town council. Despite overwhelming initial positive reception and agreement that our schools need attention, unfortunately, the town council has decided to start fresh with a new committee. This new group will consist primarily of elected officials, which raises concerns. Limited representation, which is unlike our previous committee, there are no designated seats for teachers, parents, or education experts at this time. The compressed schedule to prepare for November referendum, I'm concerned, could impact the thoroughness of planning. If a deadline is missed, a special election could incur additional costs. The risk of inadequately considering contemporary educational environments that support diverse learning styles and teaching methods may not, may be overlooked. Critical digital learning needs may be overlooked without proper technical expertise on the committee. Specific special education services, without specialized teacher input, we may fail to properly address the unique requirements of some of our students. The future adaptability, plans may not include flexibility needing, needed for evolving educational approaches and changing student needs. And critical needs like mandatory pre-K may not receive adequate attention under this new structure. I want to emphasize that modernizing our schools is crucial. However, the process of getting there matters just as much to me as the outcome. Quality education requires planning, diverse perspectives, careful consideration, and a focus on long-term community needs, not short-term political gains. I encourage everyone to stay informed and participate in upcoming public hearings and information sessions. Our children's educational future deserves a thorough and inclusive approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, next is Sherri Spalding.
Sherri Spalding, 11 Cartier Road. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, fellow educators, and concerned community members listening from home. I'm here before you this evening as a self-contained special education teacher to address the misinformation surrounding time aside rooms, often referred to as blue rooms in our specialized programs. It is crucial that we debunk the harmful narrative that these rooms are inherently abusive or harmful to students. On the contrary, time aside rooms play a vital role in creating a safe and supportive learning environment for all students. Using the words detention-style rooms to describe time aside rooms implies these rooms are being used for punishment. These rooms, which are typically used for students with social and emotional needs, are not about punishment. They are supportive spaces that these students can and do access voluntarily when they recognize they may need a break away from their peers or adults to self-regulate. It's important to understand, especially in the world of special education, that self-regulation looks different for everyone. And time aside rooms can be adapted based on individual student needs. Some students might self-regulate from sensory input, like being able to throw a softball at the wall for movement, while others may just prefer a quiet space to collect their thoughts and use deep breathing exercises for a coping mechanism. The time aside room is a versatile resource in special education classrooms that allow students to self-regulate however they need. They are also used for protective measures in instances where a student's behavior poses a risk of harm to themselves or others. They allow for a safe separation while de-escalation strategies are implemented by the school's crisis intervention team. When asked to describe what their opinions were of having a time aside room in our classroom, the first three words my students agreed upon were, and I'm quoting, "safe, fun, quiet", which should speak as a powerful testimony to the positive impact of this valuable resource in our program. The words detention-style were never mentioned. Our schools took a hard hit with the budget cut last year. We lost teachers, paraprofessionals, behavior technicians, substitute teachers. Enfield educators are struggling right now. A lot of community members I see on Facebook constantly think that they have the answers to solving all of the problems that we're seeing. One thing that comes up consistently is we need more BCBAs or board-certified behavior analysts, for those that don't know. We don't have funds to hire more BCBAs. It's not a secret, right? Funding is not something that we can control right now. What we can do right now is work together as a community to not only ensure that all our students have access to the supports and resources that they need to be successful, but also be supportive of the few supports and resources we have left. We are doing our best and always have our students' best interests at heart. Please make sure you're choosing verbiage that supports our teachers and specialized programs so not to create division in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. I think, I guess, I think it's Jose and Eileen Barrios.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Just make sure the red light's on.
Yeah. That's perfect. Thank you. First time doing this. I've been living in Enfield for quite some time now. I have, I'm a family of five and we just have some concerns and we want the best for our children. And that's why we have these meetings and that's why I'm willing to attend. I appreciate Amanda and Tina and Philip for those questions and just really pressing some of these things that require. And the first young lady, that was awesome and what you had to say. But as I said back there, there was a lot of, there was a large amount of programs in place that don't always meet specific children. And the percentage of classrooms, student to, students to teachers has gone out of, gone out of whack, for the lack of terms and keep it simple here. PPTs and IEPs are just an umbrella form of getting through and how the district wants to put in place confidence in parents. Medication is not the way all the time. And as I appreciate the IPS and the ECPs and the IELs and the ASDs and the SORA, SOARs, great programs, just a bunch of acronyms to me. But I have two children that require something specific and the IEP has left one four grades behind for six years. I can't no longer continue to sit here and take on the PPT community program, community. I just think what's written on these documents is planning, planning placement team. I have 250 pages worth of IEPs front and back that if you was to sit there, it just, as a miracle round. And I don't feel like the 2.5% that are neighboring 4.2 South Windsor, 4.4 East Windsor, 4.7 Connecticut as a whole, and 6.5 Manchester. I just would like to say maybe those districts are just willing to accept the fact that as a district, they can't provide what's needed. And this 2.5% is just a hoax. And for example, four or if not more, four BCBAs in this district is just not enough for, what was the enormous number? Oh, 4,806 students and 26 are only outplaced. I mean, can anybody take out their calculators and do what percentage is that? There's a 00001, it's like 3.5 and just, it's like pi in reverse. We travel to outsource one of my youngest sons 30 miles a day, four times a day. That's 120 miles, five times a week. That's 600 miles that we do a week because BCBAs are not in place at this school district. So this 2.5% is just another way for you guys to say we're, we're giving the best you guys can. But we don't, we as parents don't always need the umbrella effect. You know, we need specific, we need specific programs and paraprofessionals and substitute teachers, going back to the budget cuts, it's just wild. I have a daughter that's in a school that barely has heat, but yet it's just, it's just, it's just wild that we continue to lack on certain things and then lack on, you know, specific needs. And we're not even talking about IEEs and why the district is not willing to pay for this. In fact, put families in mediations and do the process and cost families thousands of dollars when your district alone can diagnose without a pediatrician a specific disability, for example, dyslexia, which requires an Orton-Gilliam program. Why is not, why is that not being put into, into play? As I turn around, the whole front Eagle Academy has left the building. And that's interesting how we can support such a program, again, which requires an umbrella effect to, to just show a little bit of effort. And we don't want a little bit of effort, we want specific, specific effort. And I know it starts with you guys and this is our concern. And I'm a one-income home with five in total, including myself. And we just believe that sometimes a district who's willing to outsource is not a bad district. It's a district that allows themselves to acknowledge that maybe right now we can't afford it, but we will try to help you find those resources. So I don't stand by the 2.5% versus our neighboring cities. Thank you.
Thanks, Jose. Next up is Maureen Griffin.
Hello, Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. Her presentation was good, interesting. Lacking, I'd like to see another one. What does a family have to go through in order for their child to become a child who's receiving those services? Explaining siloing of services. These are all things that are difficult for people who have children with needs to understand the process so they can access things more readily. And also to come to the PPT in a more informed state to advocate for their child. I agree very much so that our children are very individual and especially when we're not talking about the self-contained classrooms, the need for the supports, that's where we're really seeing harm to the children, is that the supports aren't there. We can have all the BCBAs you want, but if there's not the supports to implement the strategies in the classrooms for the children, the overloaded classrooms, then the recommendations are useless. You need the people. You need the facilities. Amanda, I remember all the terms you used for the preceding services before a child qualifies, but those are so desperately needed and they've been stripped back. And we're, again, penny wise, pound foolish, which I know you guys don't hold the purse strings, but that's my, makes me nuts when those who do not understand education, except for the fact that, oh, I went to school 60 years ago. They have no idea what is needed in a classroom, especially nowadays. And they're saying, make it work. Yeah, they're making it work on a shoestring as best as they can and a swiss cheese. And our kids are the ones that are falling through. That's not okay. The, I also was on the school modernization committee. Having seen the initial Having seen the initial, um, submission that was made for what the new committee should be made of and what was finally accepted by those purse string holders, really leads me to think that there's a political drive behind this, not a drive to meet the needs of the living, breathing children in our schools. I hope I'm wrong. God, I hope I'm wrong and they can prove me wrong and I will say it clearly, but I don't believe it right now. So people stay awake, pay attention. I think that those who are in charge of our town council are laying it out there saying, controlling how, what's going to go into the, controlling with an iron fist what's going to go into the referendum. And then they can say, well, we put it to the taxpayers and they didn't want it and screw our kids. Don't let them do it.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, that is all for public audiences tonight. Board member comments are next. Who would like to go first tonight? Ms. Pickett?
Um, I'm really inspired by our public comment tonight. I want to thank you all. Um, it's brave to come here. You have to be vulnerable to be here. Um, we know how the forum is. We know how YouTube is. Um, so we appreciate you being here. Um, I've, it's been a eye-opening experience for me in this seat. Um, I expected to be flooded with like emails and public comments and that's what happened during COVID, during masks and all of that stuff. And we have seen a decrease in lack of engagement, I would say. Um, so I would hope, um, to the staff that were brave to come, that your families and your students and your fellow colleagues see, um, and join, um, the fight and stay engaged. And to you, Mr. and Mrs. Barrios, um, thank you. It, I came here as a mom. That's how I eventually got up here. I came, started just coming to meetings. Um, and it isn't comfortable, um, but it's really necessary and your words do really matter and personal experiences really do help us make better, um, decisions and understand multiple perspectives. So I just want to thank you particularly. Um, I would also hope that you chat with other families and remind folks that the upcoming election in November will be really important and we need people registered and ready to vote. Um, a couple of comments that I want to make specifically to some of the, the things that were brought up, um, during public comment and during some of our presentations and just some of my own comments. Um, one around Kelsey's comments around the reality of cuts and she, she noted the impact on increasing crisis team calls and lack of supports. This is a reality. We get notified of 911 calls, protective custody calls. I think we could all say those are increasingly un-concerning. Um, and so understanding the supports and interventions that are necessary to truly support our staff and to allow our admins to be admins. I think unfortunately, we're not even allowing folks to operate in their real distinguished role because they're just doing whatever they can to support. Jess, I'm going to make some comments about the school modernization committee. Appreciate the clarification regarding blue rooms. Um, I've had some correspondence with my colleague up here and I think I clarified some of those same exact pieces. But I do want to make some specific comments to the Barrios family, um, because I think some of my questions during the presentation align to maybe some of the questions or concerns that you're having regarding the supports for your individual students' needs. Um, one is education is full of acronym soup. We throw out a lot of big words. I am an, unfortunately, offender of that myself. My husband all the time is like, can you just speak in like regular language? Um, so I'm sorry. And I appreciate you like reminding us of that, um, and that acronyms don't actually talk about individuals and we're talking about kids. Um, and I think it's important for us to remember that we might be talking about programming. We might be throwing out percentages, but these are actually kids in our buildings. Um, so thank you for that reminder. Um, also the reminder that sometimes high quality and specific needs of students really do need to be looked at and adjusted and we need to hold up the mirror to say, are we providing the services that, um, our students require? And do we have the resources and capacity to provide those services? Um, so thank you for that reminder. I hope to see you back. Maybe we're sharing some positive things too, um, and maybe bringing some friends with you. Izzy, I wanted to let you know, um, you mentioned Black History Month and Black, uh, Black and Brown Student Union. Farmington High School is going to be having a social justice week, um, and I think they invite like neighboring communities. I'm sure there was some hurdles around getting there and all of those pieces, but I'll make sure to share that information with you. Um, Steve, excited to hear about our MTSS work and vision of a graduate. And you mentioned school modernization. I want to thank you, Steve, for the Parents' Square letter and communication that went out. Um, I also want to thank you for your responsiveness. Um, I know as a board member and hearing from families in the community, um, that that is appreciated, um, and really does matter. So I want to publicly thank you for that. Um, I want to let folks know here, I attended the town council meeting last Monday. I spoke as a resident, um, regarding my concerns, um, with the resolution. Frustrated as a board of ed member that I wasn't truly aware of the process and the, the resolution until seeing the publicly posted, um, meeting schedule. I have ma, I have made my concerns very explicitly clear to leadership. I am going to paraphrase some of those concerns to all of you. Um, I will reiterate, I've got an extensive and thoughtful response from our board chair and from Steve. Um, some of my concerns and considerations that are mirrored by some of the comments, Jess, that you made. The resolution does not outline party affiliation of the committee members. Um, my hope is that this is not a partisan political issue. However, I think it's really important that we consider fair and balanced representation. Um, and that the membership of the members who participated in the previous committee, so we had board and town council, um, membership leadership on that, um, that those folks be prioritized and thought about as far as how they could continue that work. Um, only two residents have the opportunity for this committee and there's a qualifier on that for previous experience regarding pre-ref committee or building projects. I'm wondering who will determine, um, those two positions. Um, again, no party affiliation was assigned to that. And I'm also wondering what qualifying as pre-ref or building, um, project experience actually means and who will be determining that. Um, only two admin have the opportunity to officially be on this committee. I'm with you, um, Steve, that I hope there is dedicated and intentional effort to get community, family, staff feedback. However, the reality is a committee only has an opportunity for two admin to be part of that. The resolution further narrows that with admin from the pre-K to five range. Um, I think it's important that our town council realizes that there's six elementary schools impacted, our pre-K building and programming with our town childcare. So it's not just STOW Early Learning Center, um, protocols, but ECDC uses the space. There's other programs there and our Eagle Academy. Um, so we need their unique perspectives and expertise to not only support efficiencies and facilities, but also programming. And then I'm incredibly concerned around central office administration not being included. Our superintendent and John Dig, I believe, just need to be at the table and part of the decision-making process. Again, representation from family, staff and students. Have we considered how we're honoring those most impacted? Steve, I appreciate you sharing the link to the school modernization previous work. I reminded our elected officials of that work. Um, and then I ended my correspondence with them that as a board member, in order for me to support this work, I must see commitment to honoring the existing efforts, having open and transparent conversation about areas that we can compromise on. I know the Mark Twain proposed site was a big issue. Um, and focus on the students and staff. I will not support a rushed, one-sided plan, um, that seems to be another Band-Aid fix. I want to remind people that our staff and our families are still recovering from the reorganization of schools that created the situation that we are in now. And from what I recall, that was a rushed timeline and had minimal staff and family input. Um, so we can't do that again. So I want to reiterate that this is, I got a nice and thoughtful response from board and superintendent. However, I did send a direct message to our mayor because ultimately it is our town council that decides how this procedure, um, continues to play out. I have yet to receive a response from him, um, but I'm hoping that we do as a board get an update on next steps and our role in that process. Um, and I also will ask the chair, and I'm not sure if it's up there yet, but I do know they are looking for at least two residents. Do you know when that will be publicly posted online and where folks could access that?
Oh, I don't know that, but we can definitely find out. We can ask the town manager.
Perfect. Thanks. So I think that will be important for us to share in this venue as well. Um, and then my last couple of comments are around school safety. I'm going to continue to be a broken record here with my previous requests, um, from joint security, traffic support for Enfield High School signage on Route 5, especially with those new electronic signs. Last I knew, this was in public safety, which doesn't have board of ed representation. Um, so it's my hope that this is being continued to be followed up on. And then I'm going to la, last, end my comments. Um, and I've shared some feedback and thinking of the presentation we got tonight, really thinking about how do we engage our families and next steps with our district work? So I know we have the vision of a graduate work ahead. Um, I know it's budget season. Um, and I think it's really important to understand the role of the board and how our decisions, not only the budget, but policies that we pass, um, impact student outcomes and student experiences. And the reality is that the policies we pass is one thing, but policies are then implemented and up to the district, um, for their practices and protocols. So thinking critically about how we engage families and partner with families and enact an enactment of our policies. So, thank you. That's all for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Um, Mrs. LeBlanc?
Sure. Um, so to Ms. Bruce, Ms. Sewell, Ms. Spalding, um, and Jose and Eileen Barrios, I'm going to be addressing, I'm going to, uh, speak to something and then I'm going to be addressing, uh, what you said, um, along with Ms. Griffin. So, um, I wrote a few things up for this evening and, um, here it goes. Uh, after a meeting with my constituents on the BOE and the, and the town council, the consensus is that we are frustrated with the pre-ref resolution that was passed at last Monday's town council meeting. Um, I want to take a moment to thank, uh, you, Chairwoman Riley, for sending us a copy of the draft resolution that was rejected by Mayor Nelson and Deputy Mayor Pisner. The mayor, deputy mayor did not share that draft resolution with Councilor Santinella, who is also the minority leader on the town council. Chairwoman Riley and Superintendent Macchio, I would like to thank you for the first draft of that resolution. It is clear, concise and inclusive. It is important to note that the initial resolution included one pre-K through two administrator, one three through five administrator, one pre-K through two teacher, one grade through five, three through five teacher, one Eagle Academy staff member, five electors and two town employee staff. The only resolution that would be accepted by the majority in the town council were four board of ed members, four town council members and two electors who must have previous pre-ref experience. I appreciate Chairwoman Riley adding additional individuals at the bottom of the resolution that would be brought in during the, the process. I think that you and Superintendent Macchio had the correct foresight and, um, the correct vision in going forward on what a pre-ref should look like. So I'm sorry that it was met with that much resistance because ultimately you guys are going to be taking the heat from it, but hopefully we can work together to change that. It is the hope that this new committee will accept the recommendations of the previous committee. The work was done. We can argue that the use of, the, about the use of Mark Twain, but we won't stand for the entire work of the committee to be tossed aside. When we first started talking about the reorganization, we agreed it must be a staff-led to be successful, not only for students, but for the families and the community buy-in. The teachers who work in our buildings are on the front lines and should be named on this committee. They are the perfect conduit to the buildings and parents. The original committee was made up of community members, parents and staff, invested stakeholders. We cannot just dismiss the work they did. And I just want to preface, I know that the board knows that and the superintendent knows that, but I think it's important that the community knows that to understood what was exactly put in place on Monday night. Only having two administrators is short-sighted. The admin is not on the front lines. Further, we have six different buildings run very, six, run six very different ways by the admin. This will not make the teachers feel validated or heard. Admins do not work in the classroom and deal with the daily pain points. Only having two electors who must have prior pre-ref experience is also short-sighted. Nobody from the original committee is even qualified to apply. I will also state that this resolution should have had John Dig as a named representative. His work, dedication and knowledge are instrumental in a project of this magnitude being successful. Having him be the face of this project would ensure both staff and community buy-in. Having eight elected officials on this committee, in our opinion, shows this is a politically top-heavy committee. With only two electors and two staff, the message is clear. This is nothing more than a political maneuver to control a project that will not be done intentionally or comprehensively, to basically dismiss any prior work that was done. We have encouraged members of the original pre-K through five committee to attend our next board of ed meeting. Thank you for coming. And town council meetings to reiterate to the public that the work was done and a recommendation, recommendation was put forth. That their recommendation positioned this town for universal pre-K, expansion of Eagle Academy, three K through five buildings that would enable academic collaboration, building family connections, reduce the amount of transitions, transitions kids would have in EPS, enable special ed programs to be in every building, cut down on busing and allow Enfield to become a regional hub of excellence. The list of benefits goes on and on. The resolution that the town council majority passed is nothing more than a political majority strong arm. When there is pushback on this resolution, and there will be and there is, the response is going to be to point fingers at the two people or the group that wrote it, while leaving out the fact that there was a comprehensive, comprehensive resolution that included stakeholders in the decision-making. Also, I was involved with both the EHS and JFK projects. I can tell you at that time, we had mayors who worked bipartisanly with the board of ed and town council. It was a collective effort where the mayor did not micromanage the makeup of the pre-ref building or building committees. A mayor who recognized in-house staff that would add value to these committees. I will add that the first pre-ref that passed was for Enfield High and it was under a Democratic majority of the BOE at that time. And that worked collectively with the Republican majority of the town council. Tonight, um, we had, um, individuals come and speak about the budget and the effects that the budget cut, um, effects have had on us. Jose and Eileen Barrios, I appreciate you being here. You've been here a long time and you have your family with you. It is so important for board members and the community to hear what you go through on a daily basis in our schools because people forget those voices exist. We know they exist and the teachers know you exist, but our community forgets. Um, it is really important for me that you were here tonight, so I want you to know that you were heard loud and clear and we value you being here. It's not easy to be here. Um, and this is very important for us as a board to recognize, especially with our budget discussions. Going on to Kelsey and Jessica Sewell and Sherri Spalding. So, every time anybody brings up the budget cuts we had, I happen to be the fall guy because I was the board chair on a Democratic majority. If we, if I had a dime or a penny, every time the town council majority said this about me, maybe I could retire. So I have a few things to say about that because basically I'm tired of it. People need to own up to the decisions they make without looking for a scapegoat or about talking about a Democratic majority. Because in this, I'm going to tell you what the Democratic majority did and I'm going to stand by it. And I'm also going to present facts. Moving on to the budget and the broken record the town council keeps playing. Let's be honest. The reason why a forensic audit was not done is because there is no evidence of financial fraud like embezzlement, asset misappropriation or employee theft. Forensic audit firms need a charge and specifics on where and how they think suspected fraud, employee theft or embezzlement occurred. You see, the board of ed, meaning employees and elected officials, do not have access to cash accounts. There's one very small cash account that the BOE employees have access to. Also, there's one credit or debit card that board of ed employees have access to. The board of ed has passed every yearly audit. And it's not just a little teeny tiny side audit. It's an audit. Ask the people from the board of ed who have to work on it. I will reiterate that the elected officials have zero access to cash accounts and zero access to the MUNIS system. This is why it turned into an internal controls review, which I think both the town and the board should be looked at. No elected official in the BOE has any capacity or clearance to be that close to cash or MUNIS or et cetera. Why do I think the town needs to have an internal control review? The business manager received an email that we received $2.5 million in cash through the town cash account from the state of Connecticut. They, they were asked, the business manager and superintendent, they wanted to draw down from it. At the time, Superintendent Dreszek and the business manager asked for more information regarding these funds. They asked for more info from both the town and the state. The superintendent and the business manager were clear that they did not want to touch a penny of that money until it was correctly identified. Many emails between the BOE, the town, the state with no solid answers for over a year, till our business manager saw that that money was no longer in the account via bank statement. With more pushing, the finance director said the 2.5 was erroneously deposited into the BOE cash account. This is a perfect example of why the town should be under internal control review. Follow the money. I appreciate fiscally responsible taxpayers because I am one too. I urge you to follow the money within the town, the BAA and sitting counselors who may personally benefit from town development, including field space. In the 14 years I have been honored to have a seat at this dais, I have not personally, financially benefited from any board of ed decisions, which is hugely impossible to do from a board of ed seat. Ask any of us. I have not personally, financially benefited from town development projects during my role as a BOE member either. I have done nothing illegal and have zero access to cash, financials or systems, along with my fellow BOE constituents like Dr. Kellin. The fact that some of you can so comfortably state that is alarming. The unfounded accusations can really impact elected officials professionally. The unfounded accusations can really impact elected officials' professional lives. Just because we are elected officials, it does not mean we signed up for this. Sadly, Facebook and YouTube videos has become a vessel for people to go on and make pretty disparaging and untrue remarks about not only elected officials, but their neighbors too. And these same people, otherwise, wouldn't have the courage to say this to a person's face. And let's be honest, Republicans are notorious for saying mistruths about Democrats, and Democrats are notorious for saying mistruths about Republicans. The untrue banner is all politically driven. Suggesting someone should be in jail or mismanage money without having facts or an understanding of a local elected official's role can damage a person's reputation personally and professionally. I implore you to follow the insurance issue. The Board of Ed in town carries self-insured insurance. It helps keeps premium costs down rather than being tied to a company like Anthem, who can rake you over the coals each year with increased premiums. With self-insurance, there is a cash claim fund balance. This balance should be a percentage of employees' claims experience, et cetera. The claim fund balance is where employees' cash premiums go in to pay claims. The current claim fund balance should be 4.4 million. Currently, it is 2.3 million, with 1.3 million in something called IBNR incurred but not reported. The town is trying to say we are at 3.6 million, including IBNR. Your claim fund balance should be the 4.4 million, and then additional money in IBNR. Right now, the claim fund balance has 2.3 million in fluid cash, which is technically not enough. The additional IBNR money is to help mitigate unforeseen large claims. The town originally told the Board of Ed that the insurance increase would be 11%, which is what our superintendent worked at. Now they're saying it's going up 16%, which is an additional 1.7 million out of our budget that we have to account for now. What happened to the claim fund balance? How come it isn't properly being reserved? A claim fund balance is fluid cash. The BOEs, the BOE employees and elected officials, oh, sorry about that. The town and the Board of Ed self-insured fund is being used as a budgeting tool. 11% of your premium is going up for your claims experience, and 5% is going up so you can replenish a claim fund balance, or get it up to a proper reserve. Another place, follow that money. Another place to look is how many tax dollars have been lost regarding tax assessments in our town? Who is getting tax breaks and why? I truly believe seniors should be able to get that tax break. I fully support that. Follow that money. The privatization of trash. Follow that money. It has been said that the town should engage in GAAP accounting. I am well aware of both GAAP and STAT accounting principles in reporting. I'm also versed in Sarbanes-Oxley controls, SOX controls. I have adhered to them in my professional roles. Local governments seem to use other accounting principles rather than GAAP. Like one conservative taxpayer said, who I had a fabulous conversation with this weekend, "To gain taxpayer trust, GAAP is a very stringent process that allows traceability and transparency on a transaction start to finish." I agree with this statement. A comment was made that is difficult for any party involved to make convincing arguments of what can be trusted and verified. As elected officials, we can only see what is given to us. We don't know what we don't know. We can ask questions, and we do. The Board of Ed and Town Council was given a breakdown of expenses that we were over that caused, that caused the BOE to be short in the budget. The breakdown had actual bills received for these expenses, which were mostly driven by professional outside services by special ed. I believe those bills in the analysis given by the business office. $10 million was never a real number, and it's been discussed over and over again in several Board of Ed meetings. There was a comprehensive breakout of what happened with the unforeseen expenses in the upwards of $1 million in special ed costs, increased professional outside services, increased special ed students. We also had a written commitment from the state regarding the alliance funding of 1.4 million. The State Department of Ed and our ineffective legislators did zero to advocate for Enfield. How anyone in the State Department of Ed can still be employed after putting that in writing is beyond me. We recently learned at a BOE meeting that the, that many opportunities our state legislators have to advocate for their towns. Thankfully, Councilor Santinella is now at the state and will advocate on behalf of the Enfield community, including education. Besides in this term, and I'm going there, being told my dead mom would be ashamed of me, I had a community member accuse me in public of financial malfeasance of $10 million in front of my family. It was not in an elected official capacity. What I will stand by is the Democratic majority can be recognized that under their majority test scores in grades three through eight went up in all content areas, along with the PSAT scores. This is a direct impact that the additional supports that were put in place worked. Like BTs, who had different training than paras, instructional coaches, social workers. There is historical underfunding by the Republican majority in this town. Enfield is one of the lower per pupil funded towns in this state. This Democratic mismanagement of funds is an old repetitive story that the mayor and the Republican Party majority like to push. It's old, and it's stale, and it's riddled with mistruths. Continue to say it, because defamation is not a good look on you. The Democrats will continue to work for the students and families in town, despite your group's attacks and misinformation. The facts are this: This town and board were under Republican majority for 20 years, except for the 2021-2023 year. During that time, the town budget increased over 20 million, with an average increase of 3.13% per total. The Board of Ed budget increased by 11 million, with an average increase of 1.31%. Average inflation over that 10-year period was 2.28. The Board of Ed funding didn't even match inflation over those 10 years. That had nothing to do with the 2021-2023 term. Why am I bringing this up here to Board of Ed meeting? It's the only way to defend myself and our party. Every TC, Town Council meeting, it's the same story from the same counselors, over and over and over. Let's actually look at the facts. Let's actually follow the money. Let's actually ask ourselves who can personally gain from town development projects. To the teachers, staff, to the families, let's get our sparkle back. I seem to have lost mine, and it's back. I need yours back. I know it's hard. Teachers, I know your jobs changed the absolute most with these budget cuts. I am behind you, as are many of us on the BOE. Families, you and your kids deserve better. We can fix this. November 2025 is the end goal. As Girls on the Run said, activate your star power, and let's get to work. I think it's important to know for this Board of Ed, out of the last Charter Review Committee meeting, there were two items that involved EPS, that there should be one purchasing agent of the town to include Board of Ed expenses, thought you'd find that interesting, and that the Charter Review Committee would like to control the flag policies in schools. Lastly, and I promise this is it, I was asked about my retirement, and why the EDTC or any of my constituents didn't speak of it. This term, so I'm a Swiftie, is in my retirement era. I have run in seven elections and one each time. This brings me to 14 years in this volunteer role. As me and my husband become empty nesters, it's time for me to reconnect with him and my adult kids. My family and I are ready for me to not have to leave for meetings, take phone calls, and respond to emails. There's no conspiracy here. I'm not running for your, from your mismanagement rumors. That are lies. I will finish out this term strong, but my name will not be on a ballot for November. Perhaps you will see me apply to a town committee or board, but it's time for politics to take a backseat. Thank you tonight for listening, and I look forward to finishing out the rest of this term strong, and looking for support from our community and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickett. Good luck for the next. Anybody else? Anybody else want to go next? Dr. Kellin?
Thank you. Tina, that was really wonderful. Thank you. Tina has already made a very cogent argument against the recent resolution concerning the fate of our schools, but I think it's incumbent on all the Democrats on the Town Council and the Board of Education to express their revulsion with this document and the process employed to effectuate it. The most troubling part of this story is the complete lack of transparency involved. The Democrats were never afforded the basic courtesy of sharing their thoughts about the next steps in school renovations. This is in stark contrast to the way the School Modernization Committee plan was managed a couple of years ago, when all the Board of Education and Town Council members were kept fully apprised of developments every step of the way. And the School Modernization Committee was not essentially political. It consisted of key stakeholders, parents, teachers, and a variety of experts in the field of school renovation and development. It's still not clear to me why we needed to reinvent the wheel. We already had a comprehensive draft of what needed to be done to modernize our school system, a plan openly shared with the Town Council and the Board of Education as the process unfolded. I can't recall anybody from either party openly expressing, expressing any serious objections at the time. Yet here we are, with a less qualified committee charged with the task of coming up with an entirely new report without any prior consultation or collaboration with the Democratic Party leadership. I would argue that an issue as important as Enfield School Modernization should not be subject to petty partisan politics. The future of our children is at stake. Each of us has their own pet concerns, as far as school modernization is concerned. I also have one. What happens when the universal pre-K comes to Connecticut, as I believe it inevitably will? The former School Modernization Committee had an answer and a plan, a good one. I have absolutely no idea what the newly created committee plans to do to accommodate all of those kids, and I doubt that the committee has any idea either. But one thing is certain: We can no longer rely on Band-Aids to cover up the cracks and the crevices of our aging school walls, or bubble gum to plug up the leaks of the, in the plumbing. We need long-term solutions if we want our schools to advance successfully into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kellin. Anybody else want to go next? Mr. Cover?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin with wishing everybody a Happy New Year. Welcome back to school. It's hard to believe we're already in the middle of January. I did want to just bring in a quote. I feel like it's appropriate, and unlike throwing them into our meetings. Quote goes, "The great aim of education is not knowledge, but action." This is by Herbert Spencer, an English philosopher. One of the themes that we've, we've talked about is the school modernization, the pre-ref, pre-referendum committee established by the council, so I don't want to keep repeating what we've already talked about. I personally would have liked to see further board dialogue on the, on the topic, and perhaps board consensus on which of the feasibility options we were, we would begin moving in with the options available. But I understand the reality of public referendum and capital improvement projects are within the realm of the Town Council. Nevertheless, I also have been hearing a lot of partisan and misguided criticism, specifically on the formulation of this new committee. The original PK through five committee was an advisory committee. It was exploratory in nature, and they conducted their feasibility study. This new committee will develop a specific proposal for construction, expenditure, so on and so forth, and begin generating the referendum. This does not negate the efforts of the previous committee, but rather allows a new committee to pick up where the previous one left off, looking at the options for modernization and developing it into an implementable and tangible solution. Partisan banter and assumptions should have no place on a board dedicated to student achievement. I do want to thank the superintendent for the communication he sent out again regarding this establishment of the committee. I think it was very informative, and just echo that I would like everybody to take a look at that and just get an understanding of the timeline and where we're at with this I did want to, I guess, throw out some ideas that I also had regarding possibly like an enhancement or revitalization of our, our school liaison program. I know I see a lot of opportunity for building relationships and doing more than currently regurgitating newsletters, especially now as we're coming towards modernization. You know, we talk about aging buildings, dilapidated conditions, so on and so forth. But currently, each board member is assigned to each building, and during our updates, we don't talk about any of these opportunities. And I, you know, pitch the question, when have any of us, or how often are us in our individual buildings? And if conditions are so bad, why are we not having healthy discussions on it during board meetings? Let's do it. So, perhaps an option would be to encourage school or building representatives to come to the board as special guests, to showcase and update the board on significant events, outcomes, initiatives, or opportunities for improvement within their respective buildings and domain. And this would give an ability for public reflection, as well as a board reflection. And in the spirit of timeliness, you know, this could be something that could be a 15-minute limit, perhaps, but I think it would be more effective than our current status of regurgitating what's in parent's square. Some other ideas I just wanted to mention, I think that would be good, is, is we talk about board guests, is possibly trying to build engagement and encourage participation in PTO. So if we haven't already, continue reaching out to PTO presidents or designees, and try to get them as special guests to our board meetings. And along the lines of liaison, talk about what's going on in their school, who they are, what they need, and maybe what support and advertisement we could give them through the, through the board side. Another opportunity I've seen, so I guess, through the chair to the super, I was hoping to request a review of the need of a administrative regulation to supplement Board Policy 4118.5, computer network and internet use, and perhaps you could partner with their Director of Innovation and Technology. What I see in a lot of other businesses in the corporate world is what's called like an acceptable use policy, and it's used for organizations and businesses, and it describes what you can and cannot do on our network, on our email systems, so on and so forth. Our current board policies are only regulation that exists. There's a clause for incidental personal use, but it doesn't really further define this. And it would seem reasonable, as a board, we would want to better define and enforce guidelines when using district resources that are designed for district business. Inspired by public comment, a question to, through the chair to the super, can, because it sounds like some of the public may be confusing like a quiet corner with a seclusion room. Can a student request to be placed in a seclusionary room? I don't know if you have that answer now, if you'd need to research it.
Go ahead.
I believe Ms. Carroll mentioned that they can, and they currently, actually, I'm sorry, not Ms. Carroll. Ms. Spalding.
I'm also a self-protected person.
Yes. But yes, I believe one of the, one of the folks who's a special education teacher did mention that students often request to go into the rooms.
So would that generate the same paperwork and reporting for the state?
That I'm going to get you verification on, because I'm not a special education teacher. I want to make sure I don't misquote.
That's fair enough, because I know we report those numbers to the state, and we were looking at previous reports, and...
I'll, I'll find out for you, and I'll include it in your Friday update.
Outstanding. Thank you. On the note of the Modernization Committee, so I guess this is just a question to the Chair, can you maybe speak to the plan for BOE, excuse me, BOE appointments to the pre-referendum committee?
The plan?
The plan for the, because we have four seats on this new committee.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know if you want to address that now, or during your comments?
I mean, my thought was if it's four people, there should be two Democrats and two Republicans. So, I don't know if you want to say fortunately or unfortunately. I have to be one of them for state law, so I would, you know, you guys talk amongst yourselves who you would like to have on here, and just be cognizant that the time requirement of that, I am going to assume, having previously been on the JFK one, is a monumental undertaking in and of itself. So, so that you can be there to help voice all of the concerns that we need addressed, make sure that you have the ability to make some time for it.
And did the council give a timeline, like when this committee will start meeting, or meeting schedule or anything?
Haven't heard, haven't heard anything. I was hoping that the town manager or somebody would reach out to us and say, you know, we're planning for the first meeting to be this day, or we're going to start taking applications for the citizens that are on the committee. I was hoping that we would get that sometime. I haven't heard anything yet, but we're going to definitely reach out and ask Mr. Macchio. Can I ask Mr. Promson?
Sounds good. I just want to make sure we don't miss if the committee's going to start meeting, that the four seats we have, to make sure we get those filled, especially since they, it's a big chunk of that committee. I guess the last thing I want to do is I want to just echo, I know, Mrs. Pickett thanked the superintendent for his just overall responsiveness. I know that's been one of my key themes. I know I personally try... I know I personally try to do it to every email, phone call I get that's board-related, I try to respond. And I know he gets far more than probably all nine of us combined, plus the people he oversees, so I just want to pass my thanks to that to maintain that level of responsiveness to, you know, elected officials, staff, and just interested and concerned residents overall. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coover. Gene, I saw that you had popped on. Do you have more comments for this evening?
Yes, just quickly. Good evening, everyone. I just want to do a little bragging on our Enfield Public School students. I had the pleasure of attending the Enfield High School Chorus and Orchestra Winter Concert right before the holiday break. Of course, the Enfield choirs did an excellent job as they performed repertoire of various songs, which included winter and Christmas, pieces of vocal music. The harmonies were beautiful, that were sung by the students, and therefore our students sounded great. The chamber orchestra and the string orchestra did a great job, of course, under the direction of Mr. Rapucci. It was exciting to hear future musicians who may someday perform in a professional ensemble, and it's all because of the support of the Enfield Public Schools' dedication to the arts. Of course, kudos go to Amanda Tillman, who's the choir director for these choirs, Mark Rapucci, who's the orchestra director, and Elizabeth Thompson, who is the piano accompanist for the students. So thank you, all the teachers, for your talent and dedication to the Enfield students. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Anybody else want to go? Mr. Rider?
So I echo a lot of what we've said today about this new committee. I just want to reiterate that we did not see any of the drafts before they went to the town council for this resolution. We didn't even discuss it in leadership until it was already done. So for everybody that was on the School Modernization Committee, I want to thank everybody for their time and dedication, hopefully to Mr. Colber's point. You know, we pick this up from where that committee left off because they did so much work on it, and I appreciate all the families and staff that took part on that. I have questions about the makeup. I don't want to reiterate things that have already been said, but I don't even know whose committee this is, who's in charge. Even our Chair doesn't know, you know, when we're meeting, or who's on it, or what the makeup is outside of the four of us. So beyond that, I just wanted to thank our students and staff for their participation in PJ Day on December 13th. I had sent our totals to the superintendent to share with, like, the end of, you know, happy holiday break, but I didn't see the number in there, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we did once again finish as a top 10 district in the state of Connecticut. We were ninth out of all the organizing teams and fundraising teams. One of those is Duncan Corporate, formerly Duncan Donuts, so I would remove them and make us number eight. As far as schools are concerned, we're the eighth-ranked school district in the state of Connecticut. Thank you, Duncan, for your contribution, but I'm going to bump you off the list and just say of all the school districts in town, a lot of the same names up here in, you know, in the top. We've done this seven years again as a district. Four times we've been in the top five, but all seven years we've been in the top 10. So I just wanted to thank our students and staff for that and for all their support. And that's it for this week. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Okay, so I'm going to go. I'm going to start with good stuff and then more serious stuff. First Readers is having their annual trivia night at Mark Carmel on Saturday, February 22nd. Doors open at 6:30. This trivia starts at 7:00. I have to say this, it's adults only because people bring their own beverages to drink, and it's not quite an appropriate setting to bring little children to. Plus, it's at night, and it's just a night for adults to come out, enjoy some nice trivia, and all the money goes to, right back to the students for T-shirts and books and medals and certificates, so it's a good night. Another fundraiser that I heard about, for Enfield High School music students, they're having a comedy show on Saturday, the 25th, at the Elks Lodge, so that's, like, could be pretty much fun. Also, kudos to music students. Thirteen current and former students at Enfield High marched at the Rose Parade in Pasadena, California on New Year's Day. They were selected as members of the New England Honor Band. The band played music themed around New England and wore uniforms that resembled the Colonial Army. The students also were able to participate in Band Fest on Sunday and the Disneyland Parade on New Year's Eve, so that's pretty cool. So congratulations to you guys, that's awesome. I am looking forward to especially Tuesday, February 11th, from 8:30 in the morning to 10:00 a.m. in Room 310 at the State Capitol, which is the legislative breakfast, and if I am given the opportunity, I plan on giving them a piece of my mind, because, not only because of the, you know, per pupil base cost hasn't changed since 2013, we just found out the other day in Enfield, excess cost. We had anticipated, super conservatively, I thought, 67% we were going to get back, because we got 69% for fiscal year '24. So now, we are getting 60, was it 4? 64%. So now we've got to come up with another $135,000, $140,000, $140,000 out of our current budget to cover that. So thanks, state of Connecticut. Super appreciate that. I wanted to thank the speakers that came up tonight, those that talked about modernization. I thought it was really great that Ms. Spalding came up and talked about her experience with the seclusion rooms and what the kids had said about them. I wish that Kelsey had stayed, because I was going to tell her, could you just send me an email with your talking points that you had tonight about what you have witnessed as deficiencies? I mean, I know that administrators have reached out and, you know, requested the information from all parties to what they were seeing, but sometimes we don't get to see all those things. So it would be nice to, you know, get an email to hear about what is going on, because we're not in the buildings 24/7, so we can't see everything, and it helps us better support the budget and why the things that we need are there. So that was important. So moving on to modernization, I'm going to kind of basically read you guys the response that I gave multiple people who have emailed me about the situation, because I would base this, basically my response is the same thing that I would tell anybody about, how things went and what happened. And basically, everything that was in the letter from Mr. Macio today is, you know, where we're at and where we hope to go. But basically, if you saw the presentation that Mr. Macio, Mr. Longi, and myself gave at the council before the holidays, we used some of the work that was already done in presenting what the problems are and what the possible solutions could be. We were asked to bring something forward to them, because we of the board have been consistently pushing in Board of Ed meetings and joint meetings, you know, recently that are, and previously, that our K-5 buildings are in serious need of work, and we're done talking about these problems. Like, it's, if you even went to any of the buildings and just saw what I saw the past couple of days in change from when I really looked at them last time when I had the walkthrough, I'm kind of embarrassed that we can't seem to keep up with maintenance on some issues. But that's another discussion for another time, but it was, whoa. But anyways, I honestly didn't even think that there was even going to be any kind of appetite to move ahead with anything that that was going to be that expensive. However, the council gave their general consensus that night to want to move ahead with the pre-ref committee with, I think it was $170 million cap. Now I'm hearing $175. But they would still need to vote on a resolution to form the committee. So not wanting to lose any of that momentum and simply just to assist them moving forward, Mr. Macio, Mr. Longi, Mr. Digg, they drafted the resolution to help get them going, which was basically mirrored a lot of the high school pre-refereendum resolution, and then changed to reflect this new project. They came back and wanted another option, so I basically just suggested that we use the makeup of the JFK pre-refereendum. I had experience with that. It was the same makeup as they did for the roof referendum too, and it was just they renamed the Joint Facilities Committee to be the pre-refereendum committee, and it worked. So I figured just give that as a second option. But I wanted to make sure, and we discussed this, you know, we still need to require the input from the parents, the teachers, the staff, Eagle Academy, the Director of Operations, Nutrition Services, superintendent, and the list goes on, because obviously, none of this is going to work without that input. And when you read the resolution, and Tina had brought it up, the charge of the committee at the end of it says exactly, specifically in Numbers 2, 6, and 7, that we want those people specifically to come. Now, I know that some people are definitely not happy with what they ultimately decided, the council decided, for the makeup of the committee. It's their call. They're the fiduciary, so we can only give them options. So here are my personal hopes and what my commitments are to make my one vote of the committee work. If you remember, the first go-round with JFK, and there, the first round was a huge referendum committee, and it didn't pass, and they did a whole bunch of valuable work that just didn't pan out. Then Joint Facilities got named, pre-ref committee, went out to bid, we interviewed and selected an owner's rep and an architect, and that committee made sure that the architect was qualified and had a good idea, understanding of what we're trying to accomplish, and had what it needed to put together the plans, as well as the owner's rep had what it needed to be able to successfully put together the paperwork and set up the meetings and go with us to get the okay from the state to bond for the project. We had multiple upon multiple meetings. We met every week for a long time, and during the interview process, we met multiple times per week. When we moved into planning the building, we had staff, admin, et cetera, come in when it was time to discuss the specific areas that we needed the subject matter experts on. I believe that the architect even held focus groups, if I can remember correctly. The committee was focused on gathering all the pieces together for a successful project for our students and the staff and the community. It's my opinion that this is exactly how the new committee, the way it's currently formed, needs to move ahead. We need to use what was already done, provide that to the architect, so they know that, obviously, the work that was done and where we're looking to go, as well as the price point in which we need to stay. But they're also going to need to do more specific things, like site evaluations and site testing, to get the acceptable, safe, and structurally sound buildings or sites for the job, which, if you remember, is how the issue of the PCBs and the window caulking was discovered at JFK, and then we had to spend all that money to remediate until the next referendum passed. They will obviously need to get updated demographics and role and specifications and all that stuff. So like I said before, due to state law, I have to serve on the building project pre-ref committee, but regardless of that, I would have fought tooth and nail to be on the committee. I know I'm only one vote and one voice on that committee, and I know I've heard councillors say, Board of Ed members say, that they don't trust the committee to do the work. However, I do have confidence that at the minimum, myself, and I'm hoping that the three other board members who are chosen and want to be on the committee, as well as the two pre-K5 administrators on the committee, that are chosen would be the biggest advocates of ensuring that the needs of the schools were met and was completed with the input from all pertinent stakeholders. There's no way that this gets from A to Z without collaboration from everybody. I envision that we would have focus groups and possible smaller invites, as well to get the input needed for the architect to put together the project. The architect is the one ultimately putting together the entire project, and their obvious trade knowledge of building codes, laws, building design, safety, architecture, and all that are why you need them. And we're the ones giving them that access to the appropriate input and the ed specs that need to complete that job. I've already asked the superintendent if, when the committee was set, we could get another set of building walkthroughs, or at least me, because I'd like to see them again, and they did let me go with them on Friday. I saw Prudence Crandall in Hazardville Memorial from the last time, and even in just that short time period of when I really looked at them last. I mean, you go in as a parent and you're like, but you're focused on your kids, so you're not really paying attention to cracks in walls and water damage and stuff. But having seen what we saw the other day, it's a huge change from even before, which is not good. I also asked if it'd be possible to see South Windsor's new elementary building, just because I obviously now know what a functioning high school in the modern day should look like, and a functioning middle school in the modern day should look like, but I've not had the opportunity to see what a functioning, modern-style elementary room looks like. So even if nobody else wants to go, or whatever, you don't have to. I just, for me, I just need to see what it looks like, so I know what we're trying to go for, in something that works, that's already working. And then also ask them, you know, what would you do different? What was a waste? So even if I'm the only one doing this, I just want to be prepared as possible. So, kind of all over the place, because I'm like jumping, but anyways. So basically, just as I told the superintendent, as well as other board members and community members now, I'm going to do everything that I can to ensure that we have a successful and collaborative project that meets the needs within the parameters that we were given. I'll push and fight and scream from the rooftops if I have to, to make sure that we get what we want, and I'm hoping, you know, other people join me. That's kind of where I'm at. I know that the whole thing was long, but I just hope it conveys to you that I'm committed to producing a successful project based upon what was done and the continued input from everybody.
For as long as you sat in that chair, nobody's ever doubted your commitment to anything, Charlotte, so thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move on.
Before you move on, note the time and the need to...
Yep. So, Madam Chair, I'd introduce a motion that we consider suspending the rules to allow the meeting to continue past 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Motion made by Ms., by Phil to extend the meeting, seconded by Ms. Pickett. Show of hands in favor. Okay, there is 9, 8, 7 in favor. Against is 1, and no abstentions. Okay. Phil's on his schedule. All right. We're a little long-winded tonight. All right. Anyways, let's move on to unfinished business, which there is none. New business, election of Officer Vice Chairperson of the Board of Education. I need a nomination. Does anybody have a nomination? Ms. Akri, you look like you want to speak.
I would like to make the motion to nominate Janet Cushman for the position of Vice Chair for the Enfield Board of Education. I feel she will do a fine job because of her service, devotion, and experience, having served on this board for the past four years. I admire her commitment to the students of the Enfield Public Schools, both on the DAAS as well as on the curriculum and policy committees.
Thank you, Ms. Akri.
I will second that nomination.
Seconded by Mr. Coover. Are there any additional... Are there any additional nominations for Vice Chairperson? Okay, so, motion made by Ms. Akri, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Is any discussion on the motion? No discussion, okay. So then, I'm going, I need a motion to close nominations. So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Coburn to close nominations. Now we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, congratulations, most of us. All right. Okay, so, moving on, we're going to put you on the spot. Policy revisions, first reading.
Policy. Policy 3110, Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers. This policy update uses the basic framework of the current policy of shipment, with some additional text to clearly outline specific procedures and guidelines for the budget process, aligning the policy closely with the intent of Mr. Coburn's transparency initiative. This proposed update also streamlines our policies by combining key elements from multiple policies. If passed for a second reading, the current policies 3120, 3150, and 3160 would be repealed. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 3110, Board Budget Procedures and Line Item Transfers.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Cushman, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Pickett.
I'm all about condensing and making our policies more streamlined, and efficient and effective, and clear, because like I mentioned in my comments, policy is one thing, but then understanding what it looks like in practice is a whole other thing. So I appreciate that effort in the policy committee. I think it would be helpful, before our second reading, if you could share with the full board the policy numbers that will be repealed, so I can just do a look at this policy and kind of how you've incorporated those, but other than that, I appreciate this effort.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, sentencing done, roll call, please. Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
No, just Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Ms. Cushman, now we're on 4230.
Yes. Policy 4230 is a family and medical leave policy. Its purpose is to inform employees at the Enfield Board of Education of their rights to define eligibility and to establish clear guidelines for leave under the federal Family and Medical Leave Act of 1993 and Connecticut state law. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 4230, Family and Medical Leave.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
So, Madam Chair, I'll just add, we had some good discussion in policy committee about this one. This is one we realized is more or less a required policy that we didn't have, and I think when we were digging through the archives, we found that we previously had one, probably from like 2003. That was no longer in effect, so we're looking forward to having this policy approved and on our books.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll just say that I had gotten an email the other day. I think it was through K board chair thing, or maybe it came directly from Ellington, but they were talking about how they thought that family medical leave was going to increase abs, it was from Ellington, you're right, was going to increase absences, absenteeism with our educators, so. I just wanted to put it out there that that was sent to us, so.
Madam Chair, I'll just add to that. I know I received that email and I started skimming through it. It does not necessarily tie into FMLA. It ties into a Connecticut statute that expands time off for certain jobs, and it allows it to be taken hourly and like without notice. So the concern is that staff could just call out immediately. It's kind of like a, we currently have policies that allows for like mental health days. This policy would allow you to take like mental health hours. You could like call out that morning, say you need two mental health hours, and now it would put a building at a disadvantage. So that was, I think, the intent of the email, to kind of raise awareness of that, but that is separate from the FMLA, just not to muddy the waters.
Mr. Macio, look, you're chopping at the bit.
There will be a communication, we're currently in the process of drafting, related to Connecticut paid sick leave law, that will be sent out to all of our employees. I also understand legislate, the legislation, wow, it's getting late, the legislation is currently in session, and this is something that they are going to be working on, because municipality should not have been included as part of that law.
Gotcha. Okay, so, any other discussion? All right, so sentencing done, roll call, please, Kathy. Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, and Ms. Cushman, 6146?
Policy 6146 addresses graduation requirements. This policy has been updated to reflect recent legislative changes in graduation requirements for high school students. Personal financial management and financial literacy can now be used to fulfill requirements for STEM credits. Previously, it could only be applied as a humanities or elective credit. The policy, if passed, will update the existing policy 6146 and repeal the policy 6148, which addresses the FAFSA completion requirement, since this policy actually includes that in its proposed policy update. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 6146, graduation requirements.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman, seconded by Mr. Coburn. Any discussion?
Thanks, I just want to say, this is nice collaboration between curriculum and policy. This was shifting in how credits could be used, so thank you for quickly adjusting policy to match our course offerings. I also will just reiterate the comments I made in curriculum. Program of study nights, really important, how we communicate this information to students and families, and understanding like the options for kind of pathways of courses, is also really important, so thinking about how do we do that. I'm going to again say that maybe having John Dag or folks share our program of studies here as a board guest, and like talk about those pathways, might be an interesting community dialogue.
Okay, Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was just going to echo what Mrs. Pickett said. This is a policy that came out of like a favorable review from the curriculum committee. This does also align with our new template model for a shipment and Goodwin-style policy, and then it also merges that with another policy. So, curriculum-wise and policy-wise, I think this is a step in the right direction. I know personally, and when we had previously discussed the FAFSA implementation law from the state, that was a state overreach that I'm still not thrilled with, so that would be my only hesitation on revalidating that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Kathy. Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Abstain.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, item C, reapprove Board of Ed 2025 schedule of regular meetings. So, we approved changing the April 22nd meeting date at the December meeting, so the board will now meet on April 29th here in council chambers. So we now need to reapprove our schedule of regular meetings for the 2025 year, and submit this to the town clerk for filing purposes. So I'm going to need a motion to reapprove the Board of Ed meetings.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion?
I just want to, I know we've talked about our meeting times, and I know this also notes that during the summer, we meet earlier during, for the summer concert series. I also just wonder if that's something we, as a board, consider, the timing of our meetings. I will say, seeing a family come and have, bringing their children, and like sitting through an hour of a board presentation and wanting to get public comment. I don't think there's a perfect time, as a parent, like dinnertime, bedtime is not perfect either, but maybe considering that we don't stay here till 10:00 PM.
That was, that was a motion that was made in policy and didn't pass through the subcommittee. It was voted down two to one to move our time. I tried.
Any other discussion? No? Okay, so, roll call, please, Kathy. Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay.
Just one, one note on that particular item. There was also information related to the standing committees that was included in your packet. It was under 7B. I just, with the, everything else that I went through, I forgot to mention that to you, but you do have a list. Doesn't need to be approved by the board. You folks have already, through the, through the chairs of those committees, provided the dates. You should have a copy of that in your packet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Macio. All right, so, moving on to board committee reports, curriculum committee.
The last curriculum meeting was held on December 19th. Ms. Middleton discussed updating the names of three new dual enrollment courses to reflect that they are UConn early college experience courses. For example, the course If You Love It, Teach It becomes now, the title will be UConn ECE If You Love It, Teach It. And the same thing would happen for Introduction to Special Ed becomes UConn ECE Introduction to Sped, sorry, Special Education. And the same for Medical Terminology becomes UConn ECE Medical Terminology. There was another department name change that was mentioned. There is a new language in the statute regarding the Personal Financial Management and Financial Literacy course. It can now count towards credit required for humanities STEM or an elective credit. So as a result, we would like to change the name of Personal Financial Management and Financial Literacy Business to Personal Financial Management and Financial Literacy Business slash STEM. This would allow the course to be offered for math credit, either as a crossover from business or as a math department offering. Ms. Middleton also informed the committee that the new elementary instructional teaching assistants have been supporting the classroom teachers by doing pullouts of students in smaller groups, and this will help with better student learning. Lastly, she shared a calendar of the proposed curriculum meetings for 2025, and the next curriculum meeting is scheduled for January 23rd at 5:00 PM.
Ms. Akri, finance, budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Finance and Budget Subcommittee last met on January 6th. The committee reviewed the status of the FY25 budget, and I will just read the totals of that budget that we reviewed. Once again, our appropriation for this fiscal year was $77,429,555. Our actual expenditures as of through the end of December is $34,542,958. Our projected expenditures for this fiscal year is $75,683,201, with an end-of-year variance of $1,746,354. I will pause at that point, just through the chair to the super. I know this does not include the changes to the excess cost calculation, so could you quickly just speak to and reiterate the change that that's causing our current budget?
So, the projected budget, or, excuse me, the budget that we project to have a balance of at the end of the year has 67% of the excess cost reimbursement factored in. So, when they built the budget, they project the overall excess cost reimbursement 100%, and then they take only 67% of it. We will be receiving back only 64% of it. So there will be a change, the next time the Finance Committee gets together, of, I think, what was it, about $135,000 will be the difference that will be reflected when you look at the revenue side, the excess cost side.
All right, thank you. All right, the Subcommittee also discussed the status of the superintendent's proposed budget for FY26, and we'll be adding more information on that as he begins his presentation to the full board. The Subcommittee also requested a copy of the annual FY23 single audit report, and this was subsequently disseminated to the full board during the superintendent's weekly update on Friday, January 10th. The Subcommittee reviewed approval accounts and payroll for the month of December, and those will be read in later tonight during Agenda Item 15. The next regular meeting of the Finance and Budget Committee is scheduled for February 3rd at 5:00 PM at the BOE Central Office. That's all I have, pending any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Policy committee.
Our next meeting for the policy committee is Tuesday, January 21st at 5:30.
Okay, and leadership? Our next meeting is next Wednesday. We obviously discussed the budget status and modernization committee in our last meeting. And, oh my gosh, I was just going to go somewhere with this, bringing up a point that you had brought up before in your comments. It was, what was it about? I forget now. I'll come back to it when I remember. Okay, so, ladies and reports, school reports and updates. Who wants to go first? Anybody? Mr. Coburn?
So I'll just begin with a quick shout-out to the friends and family of Henry Barnard, and just a friendly reminder that the Big Cat Courier newsletter is now disseminated via Parent Square. Keep an eye out, there's some upcoming Family Science Nights partnered with the Connecticut Science Center, and there's also some upcoming Math and Literacy Nights planned for students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Dr. Kalman?
Quick Kite report. If you are interested in participating in the 2025 Heritage Fair, please reach out to Kite Program Coordinator Hannah Song at H-S-O-N-G at enfield.org. And Stowe still has a few spaces left for rocking chair readers. Please contact Kite Administrative Assistant Dubey at M-M-D-U-B-E at enfield.org. As a rocking chair reader myself, I, I can state unequivocally that the reader benefits from the experience just as much as the kids do, if not more so. It's the most fun thing I've done since joining the Board of Education, and one of the most gratifying. So sign up. The kids will love you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
So, I don't know what our percentages are on Parent Square yet, so I don't see an issue with reiterating some of the things that are in that, because last we heard, there was only about 40 to 50% of the families that had signed up for that are getting it. So please make sure that you check your PTO pages, enfieldpto.com, your school's PTO pages for updates, specifically Eli Whitney, the next, the January PTO meeting is going to be Tuesday, January 21st on Teams at 5:30. And the Little Caesars fundraiser begins tomorrow. I got a copy of some of their flyers, but please check Parent Square for that and check your, sorry, your principal's communications. And also, I heard that our principal is out today, and I hope she's feeling better. And that's it for this week. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I, oh, Ms. Akri, you want to give the, from the desk of Mr. Dupierre?
Yes, yes. Before I even start, I visited Prudence Crandall also before our Christmas break and attended their pride assembly. The teachers and students of Crandall celebrated birthdays and pride awards, the Star Classroom Award from the special teachers. We listened to a talented student who played the piano beautifully, as well as the whole school singing a special song titled Wonderful, Wonderful You. So that was a great time had by all on that day. From Mr. Dupierre, he says, Prudence Crandall implemented a new drop- From Mr. Dupierre, he says, "Prudence Crandall implemented a new drop-off and pickup procedure. Thank you to all the parents for their patience and flexibility. It went off without a hitch. Their, Crandall is having a math and literacy night on Thursday, January 16, from 6:00 to 7:00. There's a snow date of Thursday, January 23. Thank you, everyone who RSVP'd." And, sorry, and he can't wait to see everyone there. Progress reports will be issued on Friday, January 17. If you do not receive it, please check your junk Sam folder first and then contact the office if necessary. That's all from Crandall.
Okay, I wanted to add, important for parents of eighth graders at JFK, the Program of Studies Night is Wednesday, February 5 at 7:00 p.m., and this is where you're going to find out about what your classes can be, will be, want to be for your kids entering high school, because right after that, it will be a enrollment of your child into classes at Enfield High, so it is important, please don't miss meeting. So, Joint Facilities Committee. All right, so, at that meeting, which was last Thursday, the roof of the library is almost done, the weather was holding them up, and Alcorn, they've gotten the paperwork in, but they have not, not gotten a response back yet from the state. The paperwork is ready for Parkman for a submittal in February, because you can only submit through the first four or five days of the month. But we discussed whether to move forward with the roof work at Parkman due to a, to the prereq committee being established. It was nice that Mr. Macio and Mr. Dag came. I don't think Mr. Dreszek ever came to a joint facilities meeting, but it's important because they're in charge of it. He may have come, I know he came for the referendum stuff, but anyways. They had gotten questions from the prereq, from the joint facilities meeting to ask the Connecticut Department of Admin Services, and they were going to reach out to their contact. We got, we reclarified basically what the charge of the group is, and Mr. Dag and Mr. Macio would like to start sharing the status of the buildings, if we can get them on the agenda, starting with the results from John's two-week state-mandated indoor air quality review. The next meeting is February 13 at 6:00 p.m. I didn't mean to throw you under the bus, Mr. Macio. You're just doing your job.
Yeah. I was going to actually add that to the joint facilities, that I was happy that you came, and then also went over the resolution of the committee and what the committee is actually for, because...
It's not just roofs.
Correct. Not just roofs, and, you know, you are in charge of the school buildings when the students are there, so you should have a voice in it, too, and that's what that resolution for the joint facilities means.
Yes. Yep, I think we need to come with lists of things that need repairs or repairs that haven't been completely completed, so we'll see if we can get those items on their agenda. Joint Security Committee, Amanda. Addition of school zone signs in specific locations around town. Two signs on Route 5 were from a grant for solar use projects for elementary schools, and the total cost of those two signs was $10,672. There's 2,000...
The signs that say 45 mph?
Yeah. Because they're, sorry, the solar signs.
They're solar signs.
Four from about five grand each.
Yep. Yep, there's $2,483 left from that grant. It's for elementary school solar projects.
Do we have any choice in what those signs look like? And what signs, like, who gets to decide what sign is put there? Because I guess my concern is, I love that we got a grant and we have some school signage folks, but like, that's a 45 mile an hour speed sign.
Yep. So, we also had a discussion regarding DOT, since Route 5 is a state road and DOT-controlled. They have not been very responsive, slow to respond, lack of response regarding additional signage. But basically, if we want to do the same solar signage for Enfield High, because that, those two signs are technically for Enfield Street School, because it was part of the elementary grant, I asked, it's about $3,100 for the speed display solar sign, and then it's $2,000 for seven years' worth of programming for the sign. So, times two signs is basically brings it to $10,000. So, if sometime down the road, if we win the lottery, maybe we can pay out of pocket without a grant, or maybe we can look around and see if there's another grant.
So, is it DOT that decides what sign we get to put? Like, I, so I went on the DOT website, there's a zillion different signs that are considered school zone signs, so I just, like, school myself and what, and that crazy little crosswalk sign is a school zone sign, which I cannot believe that, like, that marks as a school zone.
I specifically asked, so why can't it say "school zone"? And like, oh, well, it's a school zone sign. I'm like...
And my, what my other concern is, if that was, if that was a sign that got put in for Enfield Street School, those two solar signs, those two solar signs are not at all enforcing a school zone speed, and so my concern is, is it 45 miles an hour all of the time in front of our schools?
Because it's a state road.
So, there's no school, like, there's no adjusted speed for during school? Like, we have in front of so, so this is, like, I think, my route to school. Sorry, to prolong our meeting here, but I go by Stowe, and there's a sign that demonstrates posted hours of, like, school times when you have the school's own hours.
Yeah.
So, that is not allowable on a DOT road?
Yeah, I mean, because, there might be different, I do not know the answer to this question, but it's a DOT-controlled road, so I am going to make the assumption that maybe state-controlled roads have the ability, based on if they're a main route, like a Route 5, or if they're like a Henry Barnard, whatever that...
I'll add it onto my list of things to do and see if Chief Fox can give us an answer.
I don't know the answer. I'll, I'll reach out to some DOT contacts I got.
Yeah. Yep. And then, we also saw the Town Hall Safety/Security Light System that's in here now, and we tested it, and they have, like, orange for "secure the building," and then they have blue flashing, purpleish kind of blue for a lockdown. And then the rest of the meeting was in executive session. Okay, so then, Enfield Mental Health Committee. Jean? Here she comes.
Yeah, the last meeting was held on December 11. We had guest speakers Amy Morales and Erin Grimes. They did a presentation on Circle of Security. We would like to invite Ms. Morales and Ms. Grimes to attend a BOE meeting as guests and give a presentation to the board, to the families of Enfield, so that the Enfield community will be aware of this great program that is offered to our students and our families. Our next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, January 15 at 2:00 p.m.
Ms. Akri?
I tentatively added them to the board guest list for March 11.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Macio.
Thank you, Mr. Macio.
Okay. Then, my question is, can we add, for liaison reports, can we add a joint insurance to this, and then whenever the prereq comes up, can we add that, too? Okay. Because I think joint insurance, I think, is now going to be a, a pain point moving forward that we're, we need to keep engaging in. I didn't want to bring it up in my regular comments, because I wanted to talk about it.
Oh, that's probably what you were going to bring up in leadership, that we talked about insurance.
Yeah, yep. So, we had the joint insurance meeting, December 17. I personally, as well as some others, are less than impressed with our broker. We went over the health insurance fund balance. Obviously, it is not where it should be. We also looked at what the renewal was projected to be, and like Tina had brought before, it's at 16%, but really, it's 20 because we have to get the fund balance up. So, that previously was, like, an additional $2.4 million just there, but I had a brief conversation today with Mr. Macio, that number might be changing for the worse, the total number, but he has to do some more digging and has tasked the appropriate people, you know, HR and finance, to dig into those specific numbers. We've asked for a multitude of supporting additional information that we still have yet to receive from them, so we're currently discussing alternate options to obtain the information that we need, since we really need a deep dive into why we're here, what are the appropriate next steps? Do you go out to bid? Do you consolidate plans? Because we have, on the Board of Ed, we have seven different plans, and they're basically made up of two plans that are the same, except there's different cost shares, everything, so, of basically what the Board of Ed contributes to each of those plans. So, with that, we have seven different plans, and there are some districts that only have one plan. The town has one plan for all their different departments, so do you go to the state plan? Do you make plan changes? But we can't assess any of that if we don't have any of the information to look at, so hopefully, there'll be more news to come, and hopefully, we'll get the information that we need to start taking on that work, because this is not a sustainable increase year after year like that. So, that's that report. Okay, next, approval of minutes. Regular Board of Ed meeting minutes, December 10, 2024.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kober. Show, any discussion? Show of hands and approval. Okay. Eight, approval, none against. Number 15, Mr. Kober, approval of counts and payroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met on January 6, 2025, to review financial statements for the month of December, year-to-date, and examined various documents related to finances. A review concluded there is nothing of significance to report to the board. Motion, a move we accept the superintendent certification as follows. Quote, "I hereby certify that in the month of December, total expenditures amount to $6,366,873.60, broken down between payroll totaling $4,541,446.05, and other accounts totaling $1,825,427.55. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented," end quote, prepared by Lorraine Sisneros, business manager.
Motion made by Mr. Kober.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussion? Okay, show of hands to approve. Okay, eight in favor, none against?
All right, so certification of grant and head start expenditures. Motion being, "I move we accept the superintendent certification as follows. Quote, 'I hereby certify that in the month of December, the total grant and head start expenditures amount to $537,051.83, broken down between payroll totaling $341,122.67, and other accounts totaling $195,929.16. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented," end quote, prepared by Lorraine Sisneros, business manager.
Motion made by Mr. Kober.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Discussion on the motion? Sensing done. Show of hands in favor? Eight in favor, none against?
And there are no line item transfers at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Kober. Mr. Ryder, do we have correspondence for communication?
Yes. So, one, two items. One, I just wanted to draw your attention, we were emailed earlier today, I'm sorry, yesterday, from Allied's Community Services. Allied's works a lot with our ETLA group. They're doing Allied Sweetheart Dance, February 1. I'll post this on Enfield PTO as well, so people outside of the nine of us, who were eight of us that were invited, make sure they know about that. Allied Sweetheart Dance, February 1. Also, and then this is the other item, that this is new to all of us, but Kathy will be sharing this with all of Enfield Public Schools families. The Enfield Food Shelf wants to let everybody know that in association with Connecticut Food Share, there'll be a mobile pantry coming. They'll be hosting mobile food pantries every other Friday from our parking lot at 786 Enfield Street. All the details will be included, as you can see, Alex put that up for us. Thank you, everybody in the TV dugout for that. But this, the schedule will be shared, and we should all maybe share this with our, our folks as well, any of our social media channels. It would be great to let everybody know about this. So, thank you, everybody, for that, and those are our two items for this week.
Awesome. Thank you. We do not have the executive session, so I need a...
Madam Chair, a move we adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kober, second by Ms. Pickett. No discussion, I'm assuming, so raise your hands, eight in favor, none against. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.